We'll put them both together and you've got the 11th Annual Dance Media Film Festival, presented by Dance Camera West. The festival will screen thought-provoking dance films from around the world. The three-day festival takes place from Thursday, June 28th to Saturday, June 30th, at LACMA with one event hosted by the Hammer Museum. LACMA is located at 5905 Woolshire Boulevard. Go to dancecamerawest.org for a schedule of events. And there is a whole heck of a lot going on at the Port of Los Angeles waterfront this summer, including a new battleship, the return of fireworks, concerts, and festivals. The first to kick off the summer is the popular premiere classic car show Cars and Stripes Forever, on Friday, June 29th, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Fan Fair Fountain, located at Harbor Boulevard and Swinford Street in San Pedro. Like past years, this year's car show will feature hundreds of classic cars and motorcycles, live music, spectacular fountain shows, food trucks, and a beer garden. More info on this free event can be found at portoflos angeles.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. An LA institution just celebrated its 65th anniversary by throwing a huge party for the community, but instead of serving cake, on the menu was its signature sandwich. Anna Marcos takes us to Langer's Deli.
This famous LA landmark is celebrating its 65th birthday with a round of sandwiches on the house. Langer's Deli is serving up its famous #19, the hot pastrami sandwich that helped put it on the map, way back when Mr. Langer, the present owner's father, opened shop in 1947.
It's awesome. It's the best sandwich in LA.
It might be the best pastrami in the country.
Matters not what you charge, but don't change the product. Same quality, same quantity. And that's something that I provide to all of my customers.
How many sandwiches do you think you're gonna wind up giving away today?
It's difficult to know how many, but I've got enough products. Eight thousand, eight thousand.
I'm tired, I'm chewing. My jaws got tired.
So much food.
Oh, Jesus, it's beautiful. Well, I haven't been here since I was a kid.
The LAPD, a vital partner to businesses in this area of Rampart, is also celebrating and chowing down. And they've brought along young members of the Police Cadet Program to help recruit new members.
This is a community event. As you can see, the outpouring from the community, and it's a good opportunity for us to kind of interact with the community and let them know what programs we also have available for the youth in the area here.
If you missed the 65th anniversary bash, not to worry. We get a feeling the #19 hot pastrami will be on the menu for a long time. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on the LAPD's Cadet Program, visit lapdcadets.com. The next Cadet Training Academy begins August 4th. And for a taste of Langer's Pastrami Sandwich, head on over to 704 South Alvarado Street. Young Angelinos recently showcased their talent at a school concert with bells on, literally. Rasha Goel introduces us to the Twain School Bell Ringers, who will soon perform on an even bigger stage, the World Stage, at the London Olympics.
Bell ringers from Mark Twain Middle School rang in the tunes at their 2012 Spring Concert. And this summer, they will be charming the world with their talent when they represent California at the Summer Olympics in London.
We're the only ones, I believe, from California or the West Coast. Most bell ringers in the world are over 50 years of age, but our bell ringers are 12 and 13, and they'll be the youngest bell ringers in London, probably.
It's a change, it's a life-changing experience. It's gonna be fun.
But it almost didn't happen.
We needed to raise $107,200 to send our bell ringers to London because they were invited to perform this year four concerts during a 10-day period at the 2012 Summer Olympics in London.
And thanks to Councilmember Bill Rosendahl from the 11th District, these kids have the money to enable them to showcase their talent to the world.
I got so excited when I heard about it, and I know that Rex needed 30 grand, that we pushed a few buttons, made a few people, this and that, we were able to bring in $30,000 more.
While bell ringing is commonly done in churches with salutary songs, these students will be bringing a modern feel to their music.
They'll be using that, songs from Katy Perry, and Adele, and Taylor Swift.
The sound of music, taking these kids across an ocean for an experience of a lifetime. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What if, one day, there was a fire? And help couldn't get to you? And you couldn't evacuate in time? Because someone had blocked the road? Don't block the road, read the signs on red flag days.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, June 26, 2012. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council chambers. This is the Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. If I could please get quiet. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Our meetings are open to the public, and our committee meetings are open as well. With that said, we don't have a quorum at this point in time, but I'm going to ask Ms. Perry to start with the presentations, followed by Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry, are you ready? Then let us begin. The floor belongs to Ms. Perry.
Come up, you guys. Come close, come close, come here. Come on, come up here. Don't be shy. Come close. And teacher, where's it? Your teacher, Mr. Santos, you need to come up here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm happy to introduce Teacher John Santos and the Manual Arts High School Mesa Robo Skunks Team, and I think some of their parents are here today, too, am I right?
Yes.
Right. Parents here? Okay, sir, thank you. All right, now Mesa stands for?
Math Engineering and Science Achievement.
So I'm happy to welcome the members of the school team. These are very bright young students who all participated in the Zero Robotics Satellite Capture Challenge, sponsored by, now, I know MIT was one of the organizations, NASA was another organizations, but I don't know what DARPA stands for.
It's a part of the Defense Department. And they work on outside projects where things, where they do tasks that are practically engineering, almost on the impossible.
Interesting. The Zero Robotics Competition guided the students through an intense course in which they created, edited, shared, saved, and submitted code for applications involving robots inside the International Space Station. Of the many schools that entered nationally, the Manual Arts Robo Skunks Team placed eighth nationally.
Internationally.
Internationally, thank you. And was the only school in California to place in the top 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
So give them a hand for that. Now, through the Mesa Program, at the University of Southern California, these students have participated in a rigorous course of study, including robotics and engineering. Throughout the program, they were able to see the relationship between the classroom and the real-world applications of their study. They were all also exposed to a strong background in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I want to congratulate them all for a job well done, and for representing their school and their city. And I'm very happy to say that I think all of them will be attending four-year universities this fall.
Yes.
That's really wonderful. It's an inspiration to see them achieve so much, and I think it's also worthy of note that their teacher, John Santos, was named as one of the top five educators in the United States by the Carleton Foundation. So they have been guided by a strong and firm hand for many, many years. So with that, I would like to ask Mr. Santos if he would say a few words on behalf of your class.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan, and thank you for your continued support of our program. You've been behind us since we first started a long time ago. As a matter of fact, when the California Department of Education was originally looking at what we were doing, before the word STEM came out, they said, "What are you guys doing? You're doing something different that we don't see in other places." And I said, "Well, we call it emerging technologies." And then the word STEM came out, and basically, that's what we are. We are a program that's focused on science, technology, engineering, and math. In this country presently, there was data just came out, and it said that of minorities, those minority students that go on to college and get a degree in a STEM area make 25% more, have a 25% greater income than those that study in humanities or education. And if they go on to work in the STEM area, they actually make 50% more in their income than their fellow classmates that study humanities or education. And our focus in manual arts has been to challenge students through the ISTA-MESA Program, and we've had the support of companies such as Northrop Grumman, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, Raytheon. And these companies come every Saturday, they send employees that come and work with our students, and they follow our students not only through high school, but on through college to make certain that they succeed. Students that graduate from our program, this year, every one of our seniors, excuse me, was accepted to a university. The thing about our program is those students that matriculate from a program directly to a university, we have a 78% retention rate at the university level. So thank you. Thank you, Jan, for your continued support.
Thank you very much. We'll all go in the back to bring all your stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Okay, Mr. Garcetti, let us run through the agenda right quick. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum, if you could please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscagno-Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Bizar, Corret, Corrian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Corret seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to please rise. We'll be led in our flag salute by Mr. Ed Reyes.
Thank you for that honor. Raise your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'd like to run through the agenda quickly. If we could go through the first set of items, I believe those are items one through three.
Yes, Mr. President, before we begin, there's requests to continue item four to July 27th, and to continue item 26 to June 29th.
Without objection.
Items one through three are items which public hearings have been held. The Building and Safety Department reports that item 2F may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, members on items one through three, any specials? And we don't take, or do I have to take cards on this?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have cards?
No cards.
Okay, then let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next, four through 14, I believe.
Items four through 14 are items which public hearings have been held. There's requests to hold item six on the desk for amended motion.
Okay, members, specials. Was that Mr. Zion?
Yes, sir.
Number eight. Make sure you properly identify yourself in the future, Mr. Zion.
I will. Mr. Zion, number eight, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Members, other specials. Okay, on these items, let's prepare to vote. Let us, Mr. Rosendahl, are you, you're good? Okay, so let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. What are the next, the next section of items?
Items 15 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Okay, first, let me, are there cards on these items, and if so, which items?
Cards on items 21, 22, and 23.
Member special, Mr. Reyes.
20 and 21, please.
Okay.
And 15 special for Councilmember Rosendahl?
Okay, 15 for Bill. Any other specials, members? Members? Okay, on these items, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, that brings us to items, I believe, 28 and 29?
Yes, item, on the supplemental agenda, items 28 and 29 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, members, we've got to really try to hear these items in committee. Okay, do we have cards?
No cards.
Members, specials, 28, 29, see none? Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Madam Clerk, at this time, I want to turn everything over to Mr. Garcetti for a very special presentation. Mr. Garcetti, the floor is yours.
Come on over. Don't be shy. Mr. President, thank you very much. In an era where celebrity seems to be synonymous with folks like Kim Kardashian or Justin Bieber, we have a true hero, somebody before us who is absolutely somebody who should be worthy of our accolades, who might not be a household name in the same way, but should be in this city because of the work he has done to educate generation after generation after generation of Angelinos. It was Nelson Mandela who once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." And today, we pay tribute to a man who has dedicated a lifetime to changing the world, school by school, student by student. Dr. George McKenna has been an educator for 50 years, and this week, he leaves his current post as Superintendent of LAUSD Local District Number Seven, which serves most students in South Los Angeles. Dr. McKenna began his career as a math teacher in Gardena High School in 1962. How old were you then, Mr. Buscagno? He was good 15, 16 years from being born. And later, he transformed Washington High School, my father's alma mater in South LA, as its innovative principal, developing and implementing a model program that stressed academic excellence at all levels. And in four years, he successfully changed an inner-city high school that had been torn by violence, low achievement, and a lack of community confidence into a school with an attendance waiting list, and nearly 80% of the graduates enrolled in college, an extraordinary accomplishment. Dr. McKenna served as superintendent of the Inglewood Unified School District, deputy superintendent in Compton, and assistant superintendent of secondary schools in Pasadena. So his impact has not just been in LAUSD, but in this entire Southland region. In 2009, the superintendent of LAUSD asked Mr. McKenna to lead LAUSD's Local District Seven as its superintendent. And mind you, being the superintendent of a local district is to be in charge of more schools than most cities in the United States. Since that time, he's brought passion and commitment to serving nearly 60,000 students. He restructured Fremont High School, opened three new elementary schools, middle schools, and four high schools, and much more. Under Dr. McKenna's leadership, six of local District Seven's schools achieved API scores of 800 or better, and every high school achieved double-digit API score increases. I think that deserves a round of applause. Now, lest you think this is the first recognition he has ever received, he has received more than 400 awards. Yes, that's right, over 400 awards. None better than this, though, today, right? For his work to educate our children. No less than the President of the United States, President Ronald Reagan, called him "a hero with faith in common sense values." Governor Michael Dukakis mentioned him during his presidential nomination acceptance speech. He's been featured in Time Magazine, People Magazine, appeared on Oprah, among many others, and his life story was made into an award-winning CBS television movie, The George McKenna Story, starring Denzel Washington. And I'm sure he's still commonly mistaken all the time for Denzel, and vice versa. It is my great honor to recognize Dr. McKenna on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, for your service to our communities, for your dedication to our children, for your unparalleled advocacy for and commitment to changing the world through quality public education for every student. Please give George McKenna a great round of applause for his extraordinary work. And before, before we hear from him, we have a gentleman who is not wearing a tie today because he is furloughed. That is part of the situation at LAUSD, but he happens to be the superintendent of LAUSD. Please welcome warmly our superintendent, John Daisy.
That's our little code. So I want to say three things about Dr. McKenna. First is, George began working when I was two years old. I hadn't even started to get in trouble in the school yet. And I think about everything that I've come to know about George, and if you know George, two words come to your mind. One is intolerant, and the other is infinitely patient. George has infinite patience in working with students who are struggling, and completely intolerant for anything that breaks a youth's rights. Has stood relentlessly for what is right for students and by students, has coached students, taught students, led students, funded students, supported students, raised students, helped students, nudged students, and most of all, has been a role model for students. I can think of no better person that we would want in our public school system than someone like George. The second thing I would say is that being a colleague with George is a combination of doing what is right all the time and doing that quickly, and I have deeply appreciated working side by side with you, and learning from you, and learning with you. And then the last thing I would say is, while this is an honor and this is nice, don't expect, like George, to be going away anywhere. So we need him in the LA area, side by side with our students. So it's been a privilege and honor to be with you, and I congratulate you, and I thank you for teaching us and being supportive of our students. Congratulations, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Garcetti, before you do that, we do have Ms. Perry in the queue. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. And George, I know you're not going to take time to say this today, but there's two speeches that you gave that have stayed with me for years and years and years. One was the, you gave it at the Los Angeles Convention Center, and it was a parent gathering, and you talked about the power that young women had over their surroundings, and how to build a better young man, and how to be male role models. And it was just such a powerful, direct statement in how to shape the trajectory of the lives of young people in such, in this, I guess, the beginnings of their awakening, awakenings of who they are. And then the second one, as I mentioned to you this morning, was at the Home Depot Center High School graduation, I guess for lack of a better term, it was called the speech, and now you're there. And you talked about children always relying on their parents for making decisions for... And you talked about children always relying on their parents for making decisions for them, and then you ended it with, "And now you're there." It was a powerful speech, and it was a wonderful celebration that day. And I remember at the end of your speech, hearing people start screaming out of laughter, shock, surprise, but that you hit it right on the head and gave those kids their marching orders in a way that I don't think they'll ever forget, because I've never forgotten it. And I think it's been at least, what, four or five years? It was powerful words from a powerful man who has a keen understanding of the minds of young people and how to shape them in a way that allows them to be empowered and self-directed and grow into really good adults. So I know you're retiring yet again. I hope this is the last time that you retire.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And, Doctor, I just want to briefly say that when Ms. Perry talked about this speech, it made me reflect back on a speech that you gave maybe almost twenty years ago at the New Frontier Democratic Club. And, yeah, it was very moving, but you put the emphasis on the word educator. And you also talked about teachers spend almost as much time with the children as the parents. Anyway, I will... Like I said, that's almost twenty years ago. And my memory, I have senior moments, but I will not forget that speech. So with that said, ladies and gentlemen, if we could give a round of applause to a phenomenal educator.
Mr. Weston, thank you. To Mr. Garcetti, appreciate it. Dr. Daisy, for being here, and all my colleagues from parts of my life, my educator colleagues. Fifty years is a good journey for anyone. And I had no idea fifty years ago that I would be here. But I knew I wanted to be an educator. I grew up in the segregated south of New Orleans, Louisiana, where it was against the law for me to be in the same seat, in the same classroom with some of you who are here now, riding in the back of a bus, drinking out of the colored water fountain. I went all the way through my baccalaureate degree at Xavier University in New Orleans, Louisiana, absolutely segregated, never had a white classmate in my life. I came to Los Angeles, and at some point, I became an administrator at Washington High School, where the Crips gang was born in America. Now, that's the school where Big Gill went to school. This is Little Gill here. And that was a different time then. Now, this journey called education is something you must be aware of, because you all took the same journey. With all due respect to what you do every day, the school system is the most powerful institution in any community called America, because we sow the seed and grow the crop that become you. Now, whatever you become, you had to come through us to get there. You couldn't avoid school, because the law said you had to go to school. Now, what I learned through my educating in high schools and being superintendents in Inglewood and Compton and Pasadena, all these places that I've been, is that schools and systems have three parts to it. There's the politics of it, there's the economics of it, and there's the pedagogy. Now, those of us here do the teaching, but you make decisions that control the politics and the economics. And you might say, "Well, we don't have a lot to do with the school district." But yes, you do, because some of you will become state legislators at some point, some of you may become school board members and have been, some of you may become national policymakers at some point, because you are elected officials. And we're all ambitious. So you need to pay attention to what goes on in schools. And when we argue about what schools need to have and look for ways to cut things in schools, it's an abomination. You may say, "Well, I can't help that." I'll give you an example. I've been to many circumstances, pomp with some circumstances, and I've got lots of awards and a whole lot of, you know, as we say, fall deraw in the South. Every time I sit at one of these large gatherings where people spend lots of money and spend lots of money in major hotels, I say to myself, "How much of this money I could have used to fund some things in the schools if it just didn't give me anything? Just don't give me another piece of cymbal. Don't give me another piece of plexiglass. Don't give me another anything. Just what could I do? Could you use your bully poopit to help the professional athletic teams in this city? Act like they wanted to help fund our athletic programs, which our children absolutely need, right? Whether or not a football team comes here, I think we have some professional teams here. I think there's something in Dodger Stadium other than grass. I think there's something at Staples Center other than concerts. There are athletic teams there with big bucks. Those people get paid big money to play a game. I played free when I was in college. I was a college athlete. I was a college athlete. I played three sports in college and four in high school. I was a great athlete. Well, the older I get, the greater I used to be. I was phenomenal, if you let me tell it. But I played basketball. And the deal is, it's not that great an accomplishment, but what is an accomplishment is what you do with your resources. And so I will ask you to think about the deciduousness of your attention to children first. And they shouldn't even be on the chopping block. I've never seen an economic situation like this in Los Angeles, ever. Fifty years ago, I started, I'm still here. I've never seen us having to take days off, school year being shortened. How do we remain the greatest country if we are on the planet, if we are, if we don't educate our own children and have to import educated people, more educated than our children? There are no children that cannot be educated, none. All we need are people who know how to do it. And we need your thoughtful consideration of that beyond your narrow responsibility, and I don't mean that with disrespect, as city council persons. Yes, you may say, "Well, that's all I am as a city council..." No, that's not all you are, because when you say that, "All I am as a teacher," I'll tell you, that's not all you are. You shape lives, and you make decisions about what we do with the resources in this great city. And I urge you, look at this major school district, the second largest in the country. And how LA goes is how the state of California goes, because we're so big. LA is not the only school district, but everyone looks at us. And I don't envy John Daisy's challenge of having to try to balance a budget that was handed to him with all this desperation and detraction from natural resources. So I want to thank you for this honor, this time you've given me. It wasn't hard for me. This was a wonderful thing. When people get up and say, "I can't stand going to work," I never thought it was a problem going to work. I loved what I was doing. I've been in school since I was three years old. My mother was a school teacher. She put me in school because she couldn't afford a babysitter. And I graduated younger than everybody else in my class. I was two and three years younger than everybody. I was socially backwards. I aggravated the girls. They'd beat me up. It didn't bother me, right? I learned how to talk trash and run. That's what I did. I still can do that. And so the information I'm giving to you is something I want you to consider as you decide, how do we save our schools? And not just save them, have them on the front burner. I have no family of my own, but I don't know anything more important than children. If there's anything in your life more important than children on this planet, please tell me, so I don't leave here misinformed. I just need to know what you feel about children, which will be reflected in how you prioritize their state of mind. And these might not be children you ever get to see. They might be children you wouldn't even live in their neighborhoods. No disrespect intended. Some of you do live in our neighborhoods, some of you don't, but they're still our children. They belong to us. I don't care where they came from, how far they had to come. I don't care if their parents got here legally or illegally. It doesn't matter to me. They're children. If God made them, I got them, okay? And our schools have a responsibility, but we can't fulfill that responsibility without resources. Schools should not need heroic individuals to make them work. Final thing. He talked about a movie being made out of my experiences. A movie never should have had to have been made. Movies are only made about unusual things, things we don't expect. The media pays attention to tsunamis, not good weather, to crashes, not safe landings. If a school that works is in a certain neighborhood is as unusual as an earthquake, something's wrong with that concept. So the movie never had to have been made if, in fact, we would have been outraged when it didn't work instead of celebrating it when it started to work. We tolerate mediocrity in certain communities. That's the best they can do. And unfortunately, sometimes the people themselves say, "That's the best we can afford to do, and that's the best we're entitled to." And when you believe that, you've accepted nihilism, which is the loss of hope in the absence of meaning. School is the most powerful place for all of us. Please consider that when you make decisions about resources and ways you can help us, even if you don't think you can, at least consider the concept. Thank you for your time. I deeply appreciate it.
Let's give the good doctor a round of applause. And Mr. Garcetti, I believe we've got Mr. Cardenas to close this out here.
Dr. George McKenna, I just want to thank you for fifty years of service to our children and their families and to the community as a whole. But also, I'd like to address you as George, if you don't mind, because what you just articulated is exactly what you don't learn in school. I'm sure what you just articulated to us has more to do with not having a doctorate, but actually having it come out from right here. And that's one of the things that I think our young people need to learn, is that you don't have to be a degreed individual to make a difference. You don't have to wait until someday in order to be somebody. And I think that's one of the biggest problems that we have in this country, is that too many of our children think that the people on the other side of the town are smarter than them because their parents are doctors or lawyers or what have you. But on this side of town, we have no doctors and lawyers in the neighborhood. And little children, unfortunately, get lost in the idea that it takes a degree to be somebody. But what really matters, and I think that you just proved to everybody today by articulating everything that you just said, is that it's about the education in the home, it's about the informal education that makes you a great educator, really. To me, that's what really matters. If you're teaching from here, then you're going to make a difference. But if you're just telling people to look at your degree and respect me for my degree, then you're probably not going to engage the young people, you're probably not going to engage your audience. And what you just said right now was extremely engaging and something that's very truthful. And I'm just so glad that you decided to dedicate fifty years of your life to teaching young people and teaching teachers how to teach young people. And I'm pretty sure you're not done being a teacher. So thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, you had me jumping out of my seat at the end there. I just want you to know, and it's a no-brainer. The reality is, our country is in a very serious spot. When the technology came, everybody's got an iPad and an iPhone all over the world. And our young kids are not getting that competitive advantage that they used to have. Driving here this morning, when I heard they're fighting over the student loans and the debt now that these young people have, more than any other credit card debt, that's a disgrace. The fact that kids have to take loans to go to school just so that they can compete in the world economy is outrageous. We know that. And frankly, it just bothers me with all the outsourcing, we're losing our middle class, and if our kids aren't given the education and the support system, our country will be done. So your inspirational leadership for fifty years is exactly the baseline for all kids. And I can tell you that you're everybody's hero. We see these awards every day, and half the time, we've got a million other things to do. But when we heard you, you truly are an important part. And what we need to learn as a nation is that if we don't educate our kids, invest in our kids, do health care and do infrastructure, we're done as a nation. That has to stop. And frankly, these foreign wars and the rich getting out of paying their fair share is putting us in a very serious spot. So an education for a kid is as basic as breathing the air, and we have to do it. So bless you for your leadership and inspiration to all of us. Thank you, Doctor.
You can see, Doctor, you fired up, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. On behalf of the city, we'd like to present this resolution, which doesn't begin to summarize things, and by the way, is not made of plexiglass, did not cost us much. We're putting those dollars in the classroom, but here's a nice piece of paper to celebrate your life. Congratulations.
Again, give him another round of applause. Okay, Madam Clerk, as we're transitioning to our next item, it's my understanding that we've got the amending language for item six.
Yes, amended motion has been circulated for us.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote. There are no cards on this item, so let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, at this time... At this time, I'm going to call four general public comment cards, and then we're going to go to two other items, and then we'll get to the rest of the general public comment cards. So if I could get Steven Gar, Megan Ryan, Raul Bardios, and Charles. Steven, is that you?
That's me.
Go right ahead. Floor is yours.
Well, I'd like to give this to...
Sergeants?
Thank you.
Okay, if we could keep it down here. Go on, Steven.
Okay, I wrote it out. Basically, I've tried appealing through a lot of city channels. I used to work for one of the city departments. I'll explain in brief this letter. I was an employee at Department of Building and Safety for five years. At the conclusion of the employment, I received a five-year evaluation. I was unable to complete a route sheet after five years of four promotions, courtesy of Chief Kime, the Cracker Foundation. My hiring status was not willing to rehire until Councilmember Goldberg changed to willing to rehire. I spoke to Tom Coltes before I returned to California from Florida to take the building and safety exam, which I scored high on. I have pursued all avenues available to me. I got legal counsel, who declined to return calls, so I went to the Building and Safety Commission. The president of the commission requested wide latitude from the city attorney to hear me. He was terminated shortly thereafter. And LAPD did the investigation on the Building and Safety Commission president, and, as I understand, found a business card. My difficulty started when I was in commercial mechanical inspection, when I yelled out while a supervisor was making racial comments. Since I have a strong opinion on this issue, I assumed this was the issue. My supervisor's supervisor and his supervisor, Chief Kime, called me argumentative. And Chief Kime stated, "The real reason I was terminated was I was argumentative." It came to light much later that the reason I yelled was due to medical issues, extremely elevated blood pressure, which was medically logged but left untreated. The blood pressure enlarged my heart and caused a heart attack. While I believe that I was persecuted by Chief Kime for my conduct in commercial mechanical, I just looked around and noted, "How many minorities were supervisors, specifically African-Americans in relationship?"
Thank you, Steven. Thank you. Next, we have... You're out of time. You can talk to the sergeants if you have questions, and they will pass out the information that you gave them. Megan Ryan? Megan Ryan? Look.
Oh, sorry.
Please. Okay, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you, as always, for being here. I wanted to specifically thank you also for taking the items, the two proposed bans, off last Friday's agenda and removing them. Thank you very much for doing that. And I hope that we can take them off any future agendas and work together to find workable legislation. I'm here because I've been blessed with an able body and mind, and I'm here because there are many people who haven't been. I'm here to speak for the people who aren't as blessed as me. I'm here because cannabis saved my life. That's not the point today. Everyone knows that cannabis saves lives. No one can argue with that. I'm here to simply ask you to not restrict access to cannabis in any way. Please, I'm here to ask you to throw away the old ideas of prohibition and look forward to clear legislation that provides for safe and easy access to cannabis for sick people, for legal patients in the state of California. Los Angeles is the biggest city... Los Angeles is the biggest city in California. We have the opportunity in front of us to become one of the most progressive and amazing cities in this country. Historically, Los Angeles has paved the way for so many things in our culture: car culture, fast food culture. Now, a health craze is sweeping the city. Alternative healthcare is rising. Organic food is available everywhere you go. People are making the choice to take care of themselves in a better way. People are interested in their health in a country with an obesity epidemic. Let Los Angeles pave the way once again. Don't go to prohibition. Fast food, get it out of here. Let's do something positive for the city, for the country, and prohibition. Let's have some legislation that works.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Raul? Raul Barrios? Followed by Charles. Charles, I want to see you. Yes, sir. Good to see you two again.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm here once again to tell you part of our story, our left story, that just this Saturday, we spent 22 years committed to each other. And because of safe access, which has given us the ability to get the medication that we need, so that he and I also can take the medications we need to keep us alive. Days go by that we often wonder, you know, do I have to go back to the times where I have to go around the corner and ask somebody, "Do you have anything that can get us better?" Do I have to go here? Do I have to go there? Right now, it's safe. It's easy for compassionate places to stay open, so that we can go in there, we can get the medication we need that we choose is right for us, and we're able to stay alive. As days go by, months go by, we have our grandson now who lives with us and who we also take care of. We want him to know that his grandfathers may be sick, and they may be ill, but because of the great people and the great compassionate places that are out there that allow us safe access, we're able to be there for him day by day. We're able to see him grow, watch him grow. He knows what we go through daily in terms of our physical health. He knows that his grandfathers have to take medications every day. He knows that sometimes we can't carry him as much as we want to, but because of compassionate places and safe access, we're able to do that. And I just want you guys to just think of people like us, when you guys go to these motions and these things, and think about us, the ones who really need it, the ones who really deserve it, the ones who want safe access, the ones who don't want nothing more than these compassionate places to stay open. That way, we can watch our grandson grow. He's a wonderful person, and we're wonderful people. Like I said, he's worked for the City of Los Angeles for over 20 years. And I think that the City of Los Angeles owes him something back by being compassionate. When we ask you for something, we're not asking for a lot, we're just asking for you guys to open your hearts to people like us, who just want a safe access place for us to get our medications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Raul, why don't you introduce us to your partner? I know your name. I don't know his.
This is my partner, Wallace Lee Johnson.
Okay, Wallace. A pleasure to see you again. Charles, come on up.
Good morning, Council. How you guys doing? It's always great for me to have the feeling to want to say to everybody that I know, you know, how awesome the L.A. City Council is. And one of those things that I like to turn to say is, when you guys really...
I'm giving you another 35 minutes, Charles.
How, you know, you guys let us know that Langer's was giving away free sandwiches. And the first thing I did is I went straight to Langer's. And I waited in that line, and I enjoyed that pastrami sandwich, had a conversation with Norm Lager, and just let him know the appreciation of the community. Today for you, I just have a newspaper article that I printed out from the L.A. Times that I'd like to present to each and every one of you. I've got 16 copies here for you. And just going to leave you guys with this one, and have a great day.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, now, we're going to move to Item 15. Card special by Mr. Rosendahl. And then, Mr. Reyes, we're going to do your presentation. Okay, Bill, let's get it going.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Booker? Yeah, please. Michael? Yes. Yes. Whoever else? Okay. Colleagues, first, I want to thank my colleague, Tony Cardenas, for waiving it from committee. This is a new LSA commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, that has been appointed by the mayor and is now before us for our action. As you know, I'm very involved with homeless issues in my district. And seven years ago, when I first came into this job, I went and looked at Upward Bound House. Booker Pearson was chairman of the board of it. Upward Bound House is permanent housing supportive services for people in homeless situations. I went to a major project in Santa Monica, and it was awesome. It fit right in the community. Everybody was happy. It was working out really well. He came to me, and he said, "You know, we want to do another one for parents with children. The most vulnerable are our children out there, and what can we do?" He found a location. It was in the little strip of Culver City, but all the constituents around it were mine. It was one of these Motel 6-type places. And frankly, it was a dump. And he went in there, and he put together a program that transitions children and parents... And actually, sometimes there's one parent, sometimes there's two parents. We uncovered one family, two of them, and five children. And Booker actually found them, and we got them into this structure. Three years later, the county supervisors, everybody loves it, there's not been one complaint, Mr. President, from our community people. Then, he got involved in what we were having as a very serious issue in the Westchester Park. Lots of homeless people, lots of fighting, causing problems with the seniors, causing problems with people going to the library and so on. Instead of just throwing them under the bush, which happens so much, he got involved with them. He worked with the homeless people. He worked with my office. And Mark Ridley-Thomas, the supervisor, got engaged. And we ended up transitioning the majority of them into either permanent housing through PATH, which was a very, very good group that helps me on a lot of issues in my district, brought the St. Joseph Center in, brought Venice Family Clinic in. They brought in all these groups, plus all the different county agencies. And that's where our LSA guy just went nuts with excitement about it, and he got all of his people in it. And so, it was an honor when the mayor appointed him to this commission. And Mr. Cardenas waived it because we wanted him to get forward right now and work through this recess period on homeless issues. So, I just want you to know, colleagues, he's first-class, and he's going to be a great treasure to us all. And tell him a little bit about your background and why you're interested in being a commissioner. Booker Pearson.
Thank you, Councilmember and Council President Weston. I started 20 years ago volunteering for homeless efforts, a lot of individuals. And I quickly realized that homeless children were the most vulnerable and had very little resources because they're hidden. And the last 20 years, I've been part of volunteering for an organization that, as Bill said, has opened two homeless shelters for families with homeless children. That organization has put over 1,000 children, right at 1,000, 917 to be exact, children into permanent housing since in the last 12 years. We're very proud of that. I think that that participation alone would bring a new focus and some information and knowledge to the LSA Commission, who I greatly admire. I greatly admire LSA, the things they've done the last few years. I think this would bring the focus of the challenge to homeless families with minor children, which, as Dr. McKenna was saying, they're our most important product, and they do get neglected. We have anywhere from LAUSD estimates, they have 13,000 homeless children just in LAUSD. The county estimates is 20,000 in the county. So, talking about education, they're four times less likely to graduate from high school. So, right there, we're losing a fortune. And then, as Bill said, I got involved with Westchester Park and the homeless adults that are living there and had issues. Through his help and a lot of city and county agencies, we're able to maintain them back into permanent housing.
Thank you.
Terry is here. If she could just stand up so we could meet her. Great lady, great supporter.
Well, Bill, you must have done an excellent job in introducing this young man. There are no speakers on the queue, so with that said, let's make this official. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations. Mr. Reyes, are you ready, or do you want me to... Are you ready? Mr. Labange. The floor is yours, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. If we can start with the video, and we'll start with the video then. If I may get permission from my colleagues, allowing the Council President to allow myself and the co-authors of the motion to speak.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just before counts was Items 20 and 21.
...to connect them with worldwide markets. All told, these businesses employ more than 42,000 workers and account for $16.3 billion of our economy. For example, in District 8, these representative businesses account for more than 2,400 jobs and $3.8 billion of goods managed through the ports. An efficient, sustainable, environmentally sound, competitive port system is absolutely vital. But now, there is a threat to the ports and to our region's economy. The Panama Canal is being widened and deepened. When it's completed in 2014, it will allow trade and commerce to bypass our ports and go directly to the East Coast and Gulf ports. If we don't respond now to this competitive threat, those shipments could also carry away hundreds of thousands of jobs.
If we lose to the canal, we lose job opportunities and business opportunities for a whole generation. And we can't afford to do that. There's too much at stake here.
We'll see an atrophy of the trade and transportation business and industry in this region. We'll see cargo go elsewhere. We'll see the associated cargo handling jobs, the income to the families, and all the jobs that depend on those jobs at the ports go away.
The economic threat of an expanded Panama Canal brings to light a deeper continuing challenge, that is red tape. Avoidable delays continue to limit our ability to compete. And if we can't cut through this red tape, it is going to cost us jobs.
Unfortunately, we've created a quagmire of bureaucracy, of hoops that everything has to jump through. And where China can get a project done, an equal project in a year, it takes us, in some cases, up to 15 years to get that same project done.
And a more efficient port infrastructure helps us achieve our goals for the environment.
Our entire goods movement system in Southern California will be cleaner and more efficient, and that means less pollution every day, less particulates and less toxics in our community.
The threat to jobs is real. It is time to act to protect our businesses, to protect our jobs. A growing number of labor, environmental, business, and government leaders are now committed to working together to help remove the barriers, to working faster, to meeting and beating the competition.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Like in college, I'd like to ask if I can make a quick presentation along with Council Buscayino, our co-presenter, and should Councilman Weston come back if you'd like to speak to Councilor Labange? But I want to invite our panelists to the table. We have with us Geraldine Nats, Executive Director, Port of Los Angeles. Please come to the table. Maria Elena Durazo, Executive Secretary, Treasurer of the LA Federation Labor. Thank you for coming. Hassan Icarda, Executive Director of the Southern California Association of Governments. Thank you, Hassan. Laranda Bowen, who is with the Small Business Air Resources Board, Air Resources Board, and Billy Greer, the President of the Southern California Leadership Council. And I also want to thank the folks in the front row for joining us today. We have Marvin Krupke, Business Manager, IBW Local 11. Peter Payton, ILWU Local 63, and co-chairs of Jobs First Alliance. Job McLaren, President of Pacific Merchant Shipping Association. Thank you. Wally Baker, the President of Jobs First Alliance. And colleagues, about last summer, over at La Quinta, we had a conference with SCAG. At that point, I was able to meet and learn of this amazing effort because of the concern that the video has presented to us, which is, how do we keep our jobs in Southern California, in the city and in the region? And thanks to Wally Baker and Hassan and others, they worked diligently in trying to put together a presentation that would not only catch our attention, but have us respond in a very real way. This is a regional effort. It's not just a district effort or a city. It's a regional effort. Now, when we talk about the competitive nature of this industry and our strategic post within the international economy, it is crucial that we do everything in our power to preserve our jobs. And you will see on your desk, you actually have a profile of jobs that are in jeopardy should we not perform and move forward in a manner that is strategic. So, that being said, there's much more to be shared, but I'd like to ask our Councilman Joe Buscayino from the 15th District. I want to thank him. When these discussions were going forward, he was still in the campaign trail. He's now in office, and I want to thank him for, one, allowing for this cooperative effort to come forward, to be a co-author of the motions you see here today. And I'll stop here and introduce Councilman Buscayino. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. Thank you so much for shedding some light into this critical issue. And I'm pleased and honored to stand with you to raise awareness on the Beat the Canal project. You know, folks, my family immigrated here 40 years ago from Italy for the once-thriving fishing industry. The fishing industry is somewhat depleted, but it's still alive. But now, my family worked the docks. My family and friends that I grew up with all worked the docks. And thank God for the docks, I say. If it weren't for the docks, I don't know where my family would be working today. But I can say that I've seen the port grow. My brother-in-law reminds me that 10 years ago, when he'd come home from a shift working the docks, he'd be full of soot. And today, when he comes home, there's no longer any soot on him. And it goes to show that we have grown this port, and we've done it in a green way. You know, we do need to ensure that our ports remain competitive, and it's critical to the health and vitality of our local and regional economies. There's no question. Jobs throughout the city and in every one of our respective council districts depend on the movement of the cargo through our San Pedro Bay Port complex. And I know, colleagues, that if we do work together at City Hall with the great people of the Port of Los Angeles and with all of our partners who are here today, sitting at the table in the front row, we can maintain our position as the number-one trade gateway in the nation. And it's great that Dr. Nats and I have a great working relationship in such a short time that I've been in office. Just to let you know, we meet, personally meet, on a monthly basis to talk about the state of the port. And I'm pleased that I have a port liaison in my office, Patricia Whalen. And this, the cargo movement, goods movement, is something that I'm so absolutely committed to and I will work tirelessly to achieve. But as we know, we just can't do it alone, colleagues. It's clear that we all, and I'll need your help, to make the Port of Los Angeles continue to be the best port in the world and continue to be the most competitive port in the world as well. So, with that, I'd like to thank the panelists, and we're all anxious to hear what you have to say to this, in this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, if you could introduce them.
Thank you, Council President. If we would like to go into the presentation of our respective guests, if we can start with Geraldine Nats, and then go to Maria Elena Durazo, then Hassan, then Laranda, then Billy Greer. So, Geraldine?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Reyes. Thank you, Councilwoman Buscayino. We're really thrilled about being able to come here this morning and share with you the issue of trying to keep the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach competitive. We have put before you our five-year strategic plan, and when you have a chance to flip through it, you will notice that the big focus of that plan is on competitiveness. And why? Because half of our cargo goes east of the Rocky Mountains. It doesn't have to come into this port complex. Right now, the Panama Canal limits ships to ships that can only handle 5,000 TEUs. When the new project is finished, they'll be able to handle the bigger ships that can only come to us right now that handle 12,500 TEUs. Our second-largest market outside of this LA, you know, Southern California area, is the Chicago area. And so, Chicago is our battleground. If I can have the next slide. The Panama Canal is not the only threat out there. Canada has come together as a nation to develop a strategy to serve America's heartland. Our second-largest customer, or actually, our largest customer, APMT, has just entered into a concession for a 300-acre terminal in Mexico. They're going to be investing $900 million down there. So, in addition to Panama, we have other threats for the market where... So, in addition to Panama, we have other threats for the market, our second-largest market. And while we may take some solace in the fact that we monitor the projects on the East Coast, particularly South Atlantic, and whether or not those projects are on schedule, there are transshipment ports in the Caribbean. So if the big ships can get through the canal, they can offload in the Caribbean, and smaller ships can get into those East Coast ports. Next slide. We have some inherent advantages. We have a shorter transit time to the East Coast. If you look at moving goods to LA and combined with moving them on rail across the rest of the country, that's five days quicker than going through the canal. I have put before you what I call our placemat, and you can actually use it as a placemat. It basically shows you the facilities available at all of the ports around the country as compared with the Port of Los Angeles and also the Port of Long Beach. And if you really take the time to look at these numbers, you can really see that no port comes close to having the facilities, the labor force, the trains per day, the warehousing facilities that we have here in Southern California. Next slide. People keep asking me, "Well, what is going to be the impact of the threat?" And I have to say, I really can't answer the question exactly because the situation is very dynamic. There are so many factors that affect the route decision of cargoes. It's facilities, it is reliability, it is cost, it is the transportation network. I have to say, the Western Railroads, the BN and the UP have a significant role in determining how competitive our port is. Both railroads spend each year the equivalent of what Panama is spending on building the Big Locks project. So they invest five billion in a year in maintaining and developing the Western Rail system. They have a significant investment, just like we have a significant investment, so they're our partners in making sure that we stay competitive. So, next slide. What is the Port of Los Angeles doing? We have a number of strategies that we are working on, and I'll just go through them really briefly. We have to keep investing in our facilities. And I have to say that the council has a key role in this. As a matter of fact, the most significant thing to keep the port competitive, the council's already acted on. That was supporting our dredging project. That was huge in making sure that we are big-ship-ready. The East Coast ports are not big-ship-ready. We are big-ship-ready today. We intend to have the first automated terminal on the West Coast. We are looking at ways we can change the city process and permitting because we're going to be doing, building things here that we never built before. Our new plan also focuses on exploring new markets like South America, keeping our record-breaking exports. But we don't just want to maintain our market share, we want to grow our market share. And the last thing I will mention a little bit about is what we call our Competitive Cargo Strategy Committee, which is nicknamed Beat the Canal. In terms of, next slide, expanding for trade, we are investing over one point five billion in the next five years. We need to spend a million dollars a day in capital, in our capital budget, to keep ourselves competitive, and we are on track to do that. There will be new deep-water bursts, we're redeveloping land areas, we're significantly expanding our on-dock rail, and our rail partners also have some projects that they are doing. Next slide. Cleaning up our port complex really helped to keep us competitive. It allows us to get projects through the pipeline, to move EIRs. Several weeks ago, our board approved a major development for American Presidents Line at berth three hundred. That was a project that major terminal project had no opposition. One person showed up at the public hearing, and they supported the project. Three people showed up when the board acted on the final EIR, and none of them opposed the project. So this graph, and you have a copy of our report card, shows you from the left side, the blue line, where we were in emissions. OGV is vessels. Trucks is on the right side. And you can see how, over a five-year period, that those bars have really declined significantly. Next slide. Last thing I really want to mention is our Competitive Cargo Strategy Committee. That was formed by the two Executive Directors of the Port. We came together with all the stakeholders. The goal of that committee is to improve the efficiency of goods movement through our port. After about a year of working together, we have settled on three areas that we're going to focus on. We're looking at a port-wide appointment system that can be accessed via a common portal. Right now, if a trucker wants to make an appointment at a terminal, he's got to go on this website, or he's got to go on another website. We hope to have a common portal that will make it easier for making appointments. And we're also going to work with our terminal operators on testing different models of appointment systems. We are also going to work with our Competitive Cargo Strategy Committee, the stakeholders, to look at the chassis situation. Each of our terminals has about thirty acres where they store chassis. Every line has their own chassis. Some ports have common chassis pools where they have a gray chassis that is used by everybody. If we consolidated those chassis and put them in one location or two locations in the port, that would make us much more efficient, and we could devote less land to storage of them. So we're going to work on that. We're also going to sustain and grow our transload cargo. Transload cargo is cargo that comes in here in a marine container. It goes to one of the area warehouses. It gets unstuffed and restuffed in a fifty-three-foot domestic container with goods from other marine containers. It helps the cargo owners consolidate their shipments through one gateway because they know they can bring it all here, it can then be unloaded, restuffed, and then go out and service the entire country. So that's another focus of our committee. So, in conclusion, I have to say that I love the Beat the Canal effort because it's really been an effort, I call it a rallying cry, for communication and collaboration. We have come together like we never have before. Labor is very engaged. We are actually helping to unify the city behind a common strategy. If you talk to the fire chief, he's going to know what Beat the Canal is. If you talk to Bud Overn from Building and Safety, he's going to know what Beat the Canal is because we're working with them to try and simplify some of the processes we have to go to, to get our projects approved. I think I'll stop right now and turn it over to the next speaker.
I'd like to introduce our next speaker, Elena Durazo, Executive Secretary with ALI Federation.
Good morning. Councilmembers, and President Wes, I'm really glad to be here, and I want to thank Councilwoman Reyes and Councilwoman Buscayino for your leadership. It is rare to be able to come up here and not just talk about a single project, you know, a single policy, but rather look at an entire industry so that when you have to vote on these single policies, you see what the impact is going to have on a much bigger and broader group of Angelinos. I want to acknowledge my brother Peter Payton, representing the International Longshore Warehouse Workers Union. Although he's from Local Sixty-three, he represents thousands of hard-working men and women on the docks. Those are good, middle-class jobs. You can raise your family, you can have a healthy neighborhood and community, and that's also what the labor movement is all about. And we've worked closely with you over the years. We believe in generating jobs, but they've got to be good jobs because that's what we need to sustain working families, and we want policies that support the good jobs. So, I'm not here, this is very rare for me, to not be here and support and ask you to vote for a particular project, and, you know, but an entire industry. And I really urge you to use this as a model for the many other industries in Los Angeles that we need to be leaders on and not be fighting over one project or the other. The movement of goods from the port accounts for almost forty-three thousand port industry jobs just in the city of LA. I think I have that right. And so, again, we're focused on creating high-wage, unionized career ladders that have led to hundreds of thousands of working families out of poverty, you know, local hire, I mean, you name it. These all together make up the kinds of policies that we should have in all industries. So, trucking, manufacturing, warehousing, they should all also be good jobs. It shouldn't stop with the gray jobs on the dock. We need to expand that throughout all the industry. And we have to face that challenge. But again, this morning, I'm not the expert. As Dr. Natz says, I only know one thing. We're very proud to be here to join with business, environmental, government organizations, in recommending that you help to move these projects forward. We've got to expedite these projects, and I urge you to recognize all of this. Keep our port competitive. I know it's Beat the Canal, I get that it's a rallying cry, but it's really about us being at the forefront and doing, being competitive and doing justice to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I'd like to introduce is Hassan Icarda, Executive Director, Southern California Association of Governments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Reyes, Buscayino, for your leadership. President, good morning to all of you. Not much to add to what says, but I want to emphasize the fact that other ports in the world are investing a lot of money to take businesses away from here. And this should be a rallying cry for us because six hundred thousand jobs are at stake in this Southern California region that consists of SCAG. We need to do something, and we need to do it fast. We need to invest in infrastructure. SCAG, along with our partners, identified fifty billion dollars' worth of infrastructure projects in this region that need to move forward to stay competitive. So, yes, we are totally behind Beat the Panama Canal, but the solution lies here. The solution lies with you and the rest of the leadership in this region to actually invest in infrastructure so that the trade stayed here and the jobs stay here. I would like to let you know that you have a role to play at the national level and at the state level. We ship the goods to the rest of the nation, and we tried repeatedly, year after year, to make sure that the Transportation Bill in Washington gets something to goods movement because we do a lot of work for others and we do benefit a lot of states. And we would hope that part of this effort, that you will rally behind all of your leadership in Congress in Washington and Sacramento to make sure that we get our fair share of what we need. If you recall, a few years back, we almost had a bill in Sacramento, a container bill, to bring out funding. Funding now is dry. Now, one B that was allocated for goods movement, the two billion, is going to run out next year. So we are in much need of resources to move the infrastructure and stay competitive. Remember, six hundred thousand jobs, sixteen billion dollars' worth of activities at the port. We need to keep it competitive. We need to beat the Panama Canal and the other ports who are investing heavily in infrastructure. I believe in your leadership. I believe you're going to make it happen. And I want you to know, as an Executive Director who represents a hundred and ninety-one cities, you have friends there because this benefits the hundred and ninety-one cities, the six counties, and you would have all of them coming here telling you right on, "How can we help?" So I would hope that we take this seriously. SCAG is willing, like I told Mr. Reyes, to financially participate and make sure the strategy is moving forward. We work very closely with our partners. Dr. Natz said it best. This should be a rallying cry for us, not only to save Beat the Panama Canal, but to pull the infrastructure needed to create the job we need very badly in this economy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Liranda Bowen, Small Business Ombuds Person, California Air Resources Board.
Hello. Thank you, city council members, for allowing me to be here. My name's Liranda Bowen. I am speaking on behalf of Mary Nichols, who's the Chair of the Air Resources Board. She was unable to be here today, but asked me to read a letter that she would like to submit into the record. And I was especially happy to hear Councilman Buscayino say that his relatives no longer come home from work covered with soot. That was a really good thing. Dear council members, the California Air Resources Board supports efforts to strengthen California's economy by ensuring that the Port of Los Angeles and all California ports remain important. While it is realistic to expect that the expansion of the Panama Canal will generate growth for the Gulf Coast and eastern state ports, California must also ensure that it retains leadership in this market. Today's hearing demonstrates that Los Angeles is proactive in its intention to both retain its current level of cargo business and, as you said, with the commensurate jobs and economic activity and increase its market share. Moreover, the CARB is pleased to continue its support of an environmentally progressive and economically significant Port of Los Angeles. For more than a decade, the California Air Resources Board, working in concert with numerous private and public partners, has administered over two hundred million dollars in funding incentives to help the ports and rail yards reduce air pollution from the drainage portion of their operations by about eighty-five percent. This improves the air quality and LA's economic competitiveness by reducing community health impacts and opposition to port and railroad infrastructure projects. These are needed to support cargo growth, by providing a better quality of life, making it easier to recruit and retain businesses and employees, and by supporting permitting for the industrial and manufacturing expansion that the ports create. The Carl Moyer Program and the Prop One B Goods Movement Emission Reduction Programs have provided over a billion dollars for mobile source emission reductions. Additionally, SB three seventy-five steered the Southern California Transportation and Planning Organizations, whom Mr. Hassan represents, toward the development of a common vision. Well-designed projects which conform to that vision will have advantages when seeking permits. Finally, by signing AB nine hundred into law, California's Governor Brown helped ensure that qualified leadership projects would not be delayed for compliance with California's Environmental Quality Act unnecessarily. ARB will act expeditiously on these projects when it is asked to comment or serve as the lead agency. The CARB affirms its intent to support the city of Los Angeles in achieving the goal of a port that is efficient, sustainable, environmentally sound, and competitive. That concludes these remarks. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reyes, one second. Ms. Bowen, I just want you to know that pronouncing Joe Buscayino's name is challenging. So what we do on the city council, we just call him Steve. So next, next time you come, you can just refer to him as Steve. Back to you, Mr. Reyes.
Well, Steve appreciates that. I'd like to ask Billy Greer, the President of Southern California Leadership Council. Good morning, Billy.
Good morning, President Wes and members of the council. I am Billy Greer, President of the Southern California Leadership Council, and this is the organization led by three of our former California governors and two dozen CEOs of major corporations and regional agencies throughout Southern California. We're all about public policy issues and how they impact economic vitality in our region. And I want to thank Steve and Ed for inviting us and arranging this today. You have heard over and over again the actions that the port has and is taking to continue to sharpen their competitive edge and to take advantage of market opportunities as they come. But we believe it's incumbent upon the city, this great city and the entire state of California, to support the actions that are necessary to make sure that our ports remain in the game and are sharply competitive. I wanted to zero in on one opportunity that is pending in Sacramento. Business and labor leaders have come together to sponsor a bill, AB twenty-six fifty-six, which is authored by Assembly Majority Leader Chuck Calderon. And this is a bill that responds to the actions being taken by Gulf and East Coast ports that are after our California market share. As you've heard, these ports are not only, they're investing billions of dollars in infrastructure, but they've done something else. They have in place very aggressive tax incentives to sweeten the pot, to further attract the trade that they are after. So the bill that I've referenced incentivizes exporters and importers to increase their trade coming through our seaports and our airports and to also to grow cargo-related jobs. So this bill has gone through Revenue and Tax Committee in Sacramento. It will be heard next by the Appropriations Committee, and I would like to urge the council to consider weighing in on this bill. to consider weighing in on this, on this bill. So we need to continue to work together to bring in more trade, more business, more revenue, and more jobs. And we need, I think, to put a face on job statistics. You know, we throw away, we throw around statistics about numbers of jobs. I think we need to remember, you know, this is, these are jobs for our husbands, for our wives, for our partners, and for our sons, and for our daughters. It's all about people, and I commend you for, for your attention today, and the Leadership Council stands ready to help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, if we could open up the queue for my colleagues, if they have any question observations that...
You know what I was thinking? Maybe we should afford the colleagues an opportunity to hear from the public and then let them come and make their statements. Is Mr. Tobin here? Gary Tobin? Gary, followed by Wayne Spindler, followed by Elizabeth Warren. I called three names. I like to see three people. I only see one. I see another one coming. Gary, Wayne Spindler, Elizabeth Warren. Go right ahead, Mr. Tobin. Good to see you.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much for discussing this very important subject. My name is Gary Tobin. I'm the President and CEO of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. Our chamber was the champion of the creation of the harbor in the Port of Los Angeles more than 100 years ago. You've now heard the statistics that we're the largest port in the country and the gateway to Asia. But those statistics do not guarantee a future. My Chamber of Commerce counterparts from the Gulf and the East Coast are leading the charge for investments at their ports so shippers can use the Panama Canal to bypass us and come directly to them. Those ports and the private sector companies serving those ports are making huge and rapid investments in their future, and we must do the same. And you, as members of the city council, play a key role, and I'm asking you to take an important step. All too often, public and private sector projects that are vital to the future competitiveness of the port are delayed because the City of Los Angeles does not have a process in place to adequately vet port projects in a timely manner. All port projects undergo an environmental and regulatory review. Once sequed documents been prepared, if an appeal is filed, the city should have an ordinance in place that lays out the timeframe so that there are no unnecessary delays. By adopting a transparent and predictable process for development review, the city and the private sector can work together to ensure that the Port of Los Angeles and the City of Los Angeles is doing everything they can to prepare to beat the Panama Canal. I look forward to working with you on that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Madam Clerk, a request was made earlier to send all items voted on today forthwith. Did we officially make that announcement as of yet?
No, Mr. President.
So from this, I mean, all items on today's agenda will be forthwith. With that said, Mr. Spindler, the floor is yours.
Yes, looked at the, know a little something about this. The ships, when they idle out in the ocean, the state of California made these ships retrofit their diesel engines to burn a cleaner fuel while they're out in the water. Time after time after time, you and the City of Los Angeles, you penalize, persecute, and terrorize the private sector. That's the reason why the Chinese, of all people in the world who drive over people with tanks 20 years ago, have come to realize that they just widened the Panama Canal. It all started, we built the Panama Canal, and then we gave it away. And the Chinese came right in, took over economic authority to widen it. They're not going to come here. I don't care how much you spend because they know about California and specifically they know about Los Angeles. You can't drive down the 405 from San Diego north to Bakersfield and beyond without spending four days on the freeway. You can't move down the Long Beach freeway. You can't move down the 5 freeway because you never spent the last 20 years of any of our tax dollars to widen and double deck those freeways. You never put the infrastructure in place. 20 years ago, they told you dredge and widen, dredge and widen, and you said, well, wait. So what they're going to do is they're not going to come to California. They're going to go through, as the map showed you, right through the Panama Canal, onto the ships. The smaller ships will port into the Caribbean. Those are foreign flagships, non-union, cheaper insurance, cheaper fuel, cheaper help, and if something goes wrong, like what happened in the Gulf accident, they don't have to pay. So this is a real waste of time. The first thing you have to do is get the trucks moving first, then talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Warren, followed by Alex Charen, followed by Arnold Sacks. So please go forward, Ms. Warren.
Good morning, good afternoon, President Weston and other council members. My name is Elizabeth Warren. I'm the Executive Director of Future Ports, so I thank you for this opportunity today. We're a membership-based organization, advocacy group located in San Pedro with about 50 members, dozens of partners throughout Southern California, representing tens of thousands of employees throughout Southern California. We represent the entire Goods Movement supply chain from the waterfront, marine terminal operators, labor, professional services, civil engineers, environmental groups, et cetera. We believe that by growing our ports, we can advance the economic performance while concurrently improving our environment. No one in this room is going to deny that clean air is important to each one of us, but no one also said that it was, that achieving it would be easy or inexpensive. However, how we achieve this goal and how we pay for it in equitable and economically sustainable manners where we need to have this discussion. The two most important factors shippers focus on are cost and time. Congestion in the LA area is always a problem impacting both of these, so we need to support the transportation projects such as BNSF, SKIGS Project, the Union Pacific ICTF, and the 710, et cetera. And we believe that the Los Angeles City Council should support these types of projects to alleviate congestion while providing environmental benefits that make our ports the first choice for shippers. Cargo is just like the water it travels on. It's going to seek the path of least resistance. As you've heard, billions of dollars are being spent in new green terminals around the country, especially in the South and the Southeast. Those billions of dollars could and should be invested here, creating state-of-the-art terminals to operate more efficiently, creating thousands of jobs, and making our ports the number one choice. This fact, that fact cannot be stressed enough. So we'd love to work with you more and encourage you to support these projects and to work with the Jobs Alliance.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Alex Charen, followed by Arnold Sacks. Morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the time that the council's given to this issue. My name is Alex Charen. I'm here today representing the Harbor Trucking Association. We are a consortium of over 100 licensed motor carriers and other logistics providers that do work almost exclusively at the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. We, again, we thank you for addressing and highlighting these competitive issues. We want to thank you for your engagement of the trucking community, and would ask you that as you go forward and map out these competitive measures, that you continue to invite the trucking community to the table as we are a vital member of the Goods Movement Supply Chain platform. Lastly, we would specifically like to thank Councilmember Buscaino for his outreach to the trucking community and getting to know our issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. He prefers Steve. Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Expanding, streamlining the permits. Somebody mentioned expanding the Panama Canal. Somebody mentioned spending $900 million on the port in Mexico, Panama Canal. That's probably $2 billion in expansion. This is just like LAX. You know, the Airbus A380 was announced in development in 2006, and yet LAX didn't start to expand its terminals until 2010. So when was the Panama Canal expansion decided? Let's also remember the NAFTA treaty with trucks coming up from Mexico. Somebody mentioned the port in Canada, and nobody mentioned the strike that was held, that held the Port of Los Angeles and ransom all the ships off the coast of LA. How much did that have to do with the expansion of these other facilities outside of California? The one in Washington, the one in Mexico, and the deep-water expansion in the Panama Canal? Nobody mentioned that. And do you think that company that invested $900 million in Mexico is not going to send its ships there? And 1,200, somebody mentioned 12,500 containers on a truck, on a ship. If you have 100-car trains, that's 125 trains, taking four days to go across the country. So two ships is 250 trains going through the downtown Los Angeles area, through the Alameda Corridor, through the East LA Corridor. One ship a week to go through the Panama Canal. Two ships a week to go through the Panama Canal. 250 trains and 100 cars each. Where's the infrastructure for that? What has the councilmen been doing? Most of you sitting here are eight-year councilmen. What have you been doing? Mr. Buscaino, 120 days, he's looking at this. Where's Janice Hahn? What was her plan? Maybe she had the book hidden. And also, Mr. President, since you called both...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. When your time expires, your time is expired. Now I'm going to go to the members. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge the folks that are here from the diverse community, from SCAG and from labor and from the port. This reminds me of the movie industry. We really neglected the movie industry for a long time, and they decided to go to other parts of this country, other parts of the world, and now we're trying to bring them back. If we don't invest now, then we're going to have the same situation. And there are threats along the way where people are trying to take it from this region. So the jobs are critical. The fact is, we built the Alameda Corridor to expedite the flow from the port, to get it on rail so it would travel to the east. I mean, the Alameda Corridor was, I think, $40 million or so, and that was designed specifically to help cargo throughout this region. When I look at the car dealers, we used to have 150 car dealers. We're down to about 50. They've left because, you know what? They can get a better deal in another community on the border of Los Angeles. The Farmers Field, we were very successful in Sacramento by moving the process forward on Farmers Field, if we end up building Farmers Field, and we need to do the same thing here. And I got a project in my district, a Costco in a major development on 31 acres of land that was all ready to break ground, signed off by this council unanimously, signed off by the mayor, and lo and behold, someone files a lawsuit. And now that entire project's on hold because an individual files a lawsuit for a few dollars to hold up a multimillion-dollar project, the jobs, et cetera. And I don't, I think if we don't do this, we're really depriving this region of those jobs, those opportunities. So the folks that are here, when you can bring everyone on board the same page, it's incumbent upon us to support this. Because we'll go back to Dr. Nats and say, why didn't you make this happen? And she'll say, well, I went to you folks. You didn't do anything about it. We need to do something about it. If we don't do something about it, then it's on our hands for all the folks that won't have that opportunity. And that threat is real, whether it's Mexico with the port or any other area. They want to take that cargo and they want to put it someplace else. And whether it's the import or the export, we need to maintain this and we need to make it happen. So Billy Greer, who I've known for a long time, who's worked for all kinds of administrations in Sacramento and LA, and Gary from the chamber, I mean, everybody's at the table. All you're doing is saying, do what's logical, do what's reasonable, do what's right for this region. I had an individual contact me recently who wants to open up a cold storage for fish down in San Pedro, and I guess Starke's was down there, and they closed up many years ago. And you know what? They're going through so many obstacles. This man, give me a six-month lease. I want to create jobs. I want to help opportunities here. But we have such cumbersome process, people get frustrated and go someplace else. So you got my total complete support, and it's, and if you don't understand the last name of Joey, we call him Steve, Joey, we call him everything, but he's the new man who wants to make it happen. Steve, Joey, Buscaino, whatever the case may be. Buscaino. Buscaino. But he's inherited this situation. We have a beautiful Iowa, the battleship now is going to bring tourism. But if we don't bring in this port to what we need to do, just like LAX, the A380's coming in, you've got to modernize it. If we don't do this, then we're going to lose. And then people are going to look at us and say, why didn't you do when you had the opportunity to do? So from all you that are here, I congratulate you. We need to continue this. We need to make this happen, and we need to make it happen now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti.
Second's over.
Yeah, I know, but over is over. One second of 28. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and I was very proud to join with Mr. Reyes and Mr. Buscaino. Rhymes with blue sky to start it. Buskai, blue sky? Ino? To put this motion forward, and thank you for a great presentation. I want to thank the port for being here, the business community and labor for coming together, and we've got kind of all the ingredients for success. What has usually failed in the past is political will. So if we have the best port and the best people, we've got a forward-looking union that is looking at technology as being a job generator, not as a job destroyer. We've got companies that believe in Los Angeles and who have worked, and we've got also rail system that has just as much a stake in making this work as we do. So it is on us now to begin to not just prepare for the structural elements, but to market Los Angeles. I've always said, it's one of the ironies that here we have Hollywood in this city, and we do such a bad job of telling our own story. We create more stories that the world consumes, and yet when people say, who is LA? We have to say we are a great maritime city. We have to say that over and over and over again. You know, I've seen that up close. I've been up in the cranes. I've been out in the waters. I've been to warehouses, talked to clerks. I've spent time actually seeing and living and breathing this, and there are many pillars to our local economy. But I guarantee you, this is the one pillar that if you yank it out, the entire house falls. It is the single biggest pillar we have. And I love what you did here. You know, who would have thought Council District 13, the heart of the city, the smallest district, has the second-largest impact in terms of jobs and investments coming from the Port of LA? What I love even more, as I used to do with Janice Hahn, I'll do with Joe Buscaino as well, is you could go to any member of Congress, from Maine to Alaska to Florida, and say, how many jobs are in their district because of the Port of LA? They may want to steal those jobs away, but they got to realize that they actually have jobs that they have in their areas because of the Port of LA's success. And if we're not successful, they also have jobs that they can lose. And SCAG has been great because this is a regional problem. It is LA and it is Long Beach, but it is all the territory in between, too. I was spent some time with an owner of a car, sorry, a tire importing company recently. Came out, actually went up in the cranes, never seen a guy legs shake so much up there when a couple of longshore workers were saying, yeah, let's just climb up here to the top, and let's go all the way out on the arm. But he got to get in there and see because his family's company imports tires. And he said, besides one or two locations in the United States where Canadian port can get there a little quicker, we still can get to the rest of the United States through LA quicker than anywhere. And we don't have to give that up. We do not have to give that up simply because the Panama Canal opens up. So I know a lot of us were chanting, beat the heat. Let's beat Miami for real this time. Let's make sure that we get out there and that LA is number one. We showed it in hockey. We showed it in soccer. Let's do it with our port and stay on top. And know that part of what we're going to be doing, and this is really where we can come together, is by saying yes to projects and figuring out the political consensus. LA is so articulate when we say what we're against. If we tell people tomorrow something horrible is about to happen around the block from where they live, we can get 1,000 people to pack these chambers. But if we say, let's get out in front of something and actually do something good to make sure we can play some offense, not defense. In the past, it's only been two or three people. But thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your leadership, and Mr. Buscaino, and I will continue to be part of that leadership team to make sure that this is front and central everywhere in this city, from the San Fernando Valley to San Pedro, from Boyle Heights all the way over to Brentwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Chair of committee, I'm proud of Mr. Reyes and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Buscaino, I'm very proud of you as well, all of you here. I think of Professor Erie, Stephen Erie, I think from the University of San Diego, who wrote a book about our history. Mr. President, there's three things that make Los Angeles. It's water and power. And two years from now, we'll celebrate the centennial of the aqueduct that fed the pueblo. It's the Port of Los Angeles, which is constantly doing things and innovating, and it's the airports which we're modernizing. Those three things make our city. But right now, you got a team right here, which I'm glad to stand and salute all of you who are here to support the Port of Los Angeles and the jobs that is not just in our city, in Southern California, but around. The only one I want to suggest to Hassan from Southern California Association of Governments, put a delegation and go to Chicago. Go to some of the big cities on the UP's line. UP celebrated 150 years as a railroad. Let's let them know we thank them. So it's, because it's faster to go through LA to get to Chicago. Bobby Troop wrote it, Route 66.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendorf.
Just real quickly, because we don't need to waste much time. We need to accelerate this project. Everybody is on the same wavelength. We don't want to lose our competitive edge at the port. It's absolutely essential, and whatever we can do as a council to streamline the process and make it happen, it's in the best interest. I got to show you that I'm very proud of the fact that I have 1,853 jobs and jobs... And jobs are critical in this time and age, so let's just move forward, let's go quickly. Whatever we can do to give you running shoes, we want to give it to you, we want to make it happen. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Keretz.
Well, since Mr. Rosendahl didn't say that this is a no-brainer, as I would have expected, this is absolutely a no-brainer. I think everything's been said. There's no advantage to maintaining a slow bureaucratic process, especially when we're facing this kind of competition. The only point I wanted to make is that there's no advantage to having a slow bureaucratic process anywhere in our permitting process. We obviously have to focus on this first because we have tremendous competition, we have some deadlines. But I look at our whole permitting process, it still needs to be streamlined as well. It still holds back our business community and our ability to use economic development to help get us out of this recession. So I hope that after we've done this, we take a next step and take another crack at streamlining our entire permitting process and helping our business community, which so desperately needs it, in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Buscaino.
Mr. President, just to Ms. Greer, that AB 2656, that's before Sacramento and our legislators up there, just know that we've drafted a resolution in support of it, and it's sitting in committee. I want to ask you, Ms. Greer, much of the conversations surrounding the expansion of the Panama Canal is focused on the many ways in which the East Coast ports will benefit. Can West Coast ports expect to benefit as well?
Of course. I mean, I think with the initiatives that the port has in place, with the backing of labor and business, there are opportunities. This gives particularly as we build our export trade, which is, you know, a goal that we need to, that, you know, we need to continue to pursue, given that exports, you know, we are, we're kind of flat right now. So yes, there's, I think that we can see that there are opportunities here.
Great. And it's great, too, I just want to echo some of the words of my colleagues, it's great to see business and labor coming to the table. Ultimately, we want to create good-paying, sustainable jobs, and it's refreshing to know that we're doing that here. Dr. Nats, in terms of transportation and infrastructure investments, how does the Port of LA stack up compared to the East Coast ports, who are getting ready, as we heard, for increased business after the expansion?
Well, as I said, we propose to spend about $1.5 billion over the next five years, investing in our infrastructure and our terminals. East Coast, the big projects that people hear about are the dredging projects in Charleston and in Savannah. These are all projects where the federal government has to fund those projects. I know, for example, that the Savannah dredging project is about $650 million. I don't know the cost of the Charleston, but we're also talking about them having to spend probably at least a billion dollars in order to get the deep water and having the facilities there.
Thank you, Dr. Nats. Note, colleagues, that this is not the end of this dialogue of getting these updates from the Port of Los Angeles. In fact, colleagues, today I drafted a motion in front of you that will have the port come to this body on an annual basis by calling it Port Day in LA. So you'll see this continued dialogue and discussion to ensure that we remain competitive and we're the best port in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. And Mr. Reyes, before I call on you to close, since we did include items 20 and 21, I now want to take the public comment on item 21. If I could get Laura Bernadette, Lauren Bernadette, Michael Carrion, Arnold Sachs. Called three names, like to see three people. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Bernadette, and I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council to share our comments on item 21. As you know, NRDC has been working with the ports for many years to clean up their operations. This includes ensuring proper environmental review and that proposed projects will have a reduced impact on the environment. Rules that are currently in place are there to ensure that the city of LA and the public can ensure the best projects possible. We discourage proposals that undermine that process. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael.
Where have you guys been all this other time that gentlemen spoke, when they first started talking about expanding the canal? I haven't heard from you guys at all. But my question is more of, how many jobs do we have in CD 14? I didn't hear any of that. I heard just Mr. Bustamante's, Buscaino's thing. Mine is more internship, apprenticeships for some of the young kids in this city. Because a lot of your, you're asking this city for a lot of help, but a lot of your employees live out of this city. All them, all of them live in Chino, in Ontario, in a lot of other cities. But yet you're asking this city to put up the brunt of the money to help you. What about all the other cities? We need to know what you're going to do for this city and for the kids of this city that have no futures, because, again, you talk about school districts, they're failing. Talk about everything else. This is a trade where you guys got to reach out to each and every council member here and maybe--
Listen, he is not talking about this matter. Reconnect with 21, Michael.
I am. Talking about bringing, about what they're going to do with San Pedro and everything else. My question is, with all that money we're spending, can we get jobs here? That's all. They are the ones that brought it up. They gave you a pamphlet that said, all these jobs are in your district, so I'm on the queue. I don't know where the city attorney is at.
No, just keep going. You keep going like that, you're good. Keep going.
And that's where I'm at. I want to know how many jobs, apprenticeship jobs, you're going to bring to my district, CD 14. Okay? Because we're not in San Pedro. We're not in that area in South Central LA. We're in East LA. Okay? Yet, when you put those things on trains, those trains come right through East LA, and we got to deal with all the smog. We got to deal with all the traffic congestion, all the accidents. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Mr. Sacks.
Just thank you again, Arnold Sachs, just to rebut a few items heard. Something was brought up by Councilman Zine regarding the Alameda Corridor, but nothing was mentioned about the Alameda Corridor East, which takes the trains from downtown Los Angeles east through the county of LA towards San Bernardino. And MTA's expansion, or the rail lines' expansion of the Alameda Corridor East to ease the transit of those 125 trains it would take at 100 cars apiece to empty one of those cargo containers that are going to come to the Port of Los Angeles. It was also mentioned about the permitting process and how legislation was passed for the stadium. And yet, the people that worked with AEG to create that legislation are now concerned because the environmental practice process has been compromised, and there's no route for them to take in order to file a lawsuit that won't be heard in less than 120 days. So what guarantees do the public have on any kind of permitting process? And regarding the permitting process, you could also do, just like you did with the expansion at Loyola Marymount and the LA Live, where you move the permitting, like for building and safety, into another committee, like Plum, so that they're responsible for now getting or issuing the permits. We heard problems with Regal Cinema, and we had a list of meetings that were held regarding LA Live, but none of them included building and safety. Why? Because they weren't part of the permitting process. So you could do the same kind of process and just maneuver the process itself.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Okay, this is the way we're going to do this. Mr. Reyes, you will close on item 20. Mr. Buscaino, you will close on item 21. Mr. Reyes to close.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you for allowing this presentation to the council. It was very important that we look at the consequences of our inactions. And to see the amount of energy and resources being put into making sure we stay competitive. This booklet, by the way, gives a portion of jobs. It's a sampling. It doesn't cover all the jobs, doesn't cover all of the value that goes along with our connectivity to the port. I represent neighborhoods in the inner city, around downtown, but looking at the land use issues, building and safety, I really felt and understanding the regional impact by presenting motions that allows us to streamline our permitting process between building and safety and the port, to try to take out as many loops as possible so that we can get to quicker decisions is key. We look at our respective committees, and again, to support Councilor Buscaino, if we look at our respective committees and assess which, at what point does our discretion affect the infrastructure, the personnel, for example, the port pilots. There's issues there as to having a job-ready, a skill set that is continuous, so we don't lose port pilots to other ports, given the fact that they are one of the lowest paid in the region, if not in the continent. It's amazing how we could change smaller-scale issues by assessing and analyzing fees without affecting the general budget, the general fund. We're not talking about impacting general, we're talking about policies that make sense to keep us competitive at the personnel level, as well as the infrastructure level. We have relationships with the state, our state assembly members, our state senators, who are right now sitting on projects that are already funded, as been shared by our executive director at SCAG, Mr. Icardi, as to why aren't they moving? I want to thank Larry Frank from the deputy mayor of the mayor's office for making us aware of the sensitivity of the environmental issues, along with the permitting issues, along with labor. So this is a delicate balance, but we need to be cognizant of the consequences if we don't act. So again, thank you, Wally, for your hard work, Mr. Icardi, and everyone else. Billy Grier and I, we were speaking to each other a few months back and looking at the significance of this issue. And just in closing, I want to thank Tony Pettis from my office for his hard work and making sure that this day finally came. So this is, I think, our fourth shot, the fourth date. We finally nailed it down, but it wasn't easy. But again, thank you, Council President, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Buscaino to close on 21.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to reiterate what Mr. Reyes says. Thank you for allowing us to bring this critical issue forward here. And Mr. Reyes, I look forward to continuing to partner with you and stand next to you to ensure that, this is not a San Pedro issue, let me be clear, this is a regional, global issue. And thank you for being here for us and setting this all up. On item 21, you know, colleagues, we've heard from these panelists how critical it is to move forward and expedite the permit process. So let's put, let's take some action. And by, item 21 will do just that. The Los Angeles Building Code, for those who don't know, does not have a maritime-related section, which oftentimes results in a delay in the permitting process. So we will turn to the Port of Los Angeles, who has that expertise, to move forward with these maritime projects, which are very specialized and required a very specific understanding of maritime codes and complexities. And this ordinance before you would amend the building code to allow the port to assume some of these permitting responsibilities and create a new relationship between the Department of Building and Safety and to enhance the city's permitting abilities. With that, I do want to recognize Congresswoman Janice Hahn, who is now in Washington DC, who, for the first time, created a partisan, excuse me, a partisan effort by forming the congress's first port caucus. And I want to thank Councilmember Tom Labange for chairing, continuing to chair and champion these efforts in TCT Committee. And I want to thank the panelists. And point of clarification for one of our public comment, there is a great apprenticeship program with IBW, the Pipe Fitters, ILW, that we, maybe we need to do a better job of celebrating and promoting. But I want to thank each and every one of you for taking the time. And just know that this is not the end of our dialogue and our discussion on making the Port of Los Angeles the best port in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, if we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right. Thank you for all your fine work.
Thank you. I just might mention Friday night, the LA waterfront, I'm sure Councilman Buscaino will say that, but it's Cars and Stripes, and we hope to see you all down there. And in the morning, Crafted at the Port of LA, opening.
Thank you. Is this Kenyatta Moon? We're going to go to general public comment, Kenyatta Moon or Moon, William Robison, and then we'll go to the Valley for Marion Fogler and for Donna Garcetti. So, sir.
Good morning, councilpeople. My name is Kenyatta C. Moon. I am here upon the cannabis initiative for you guys to make a vote. My story is, for the past 13 and a half years, I've been HIV-positive. For the sixth time in 13 years, I'm undetectable. 10 years is my sobriety because of my affliction and my addiction. I'm a personal private chef and a personal private pastry chef. Cannabis has saved my life. The medical industry wants us to be with this disease, with society, and that is my story to you. I, guys, compel you to make a vote to keep the dispensaries open, because they just don't dispense the medical that needs for the society of the people who are sick. It helps with everyone to alleviate nausea, which is, as a chef, you know, we eat a lot. But due to the medication that I am on, I have to balance that out. So I compel you to hear and understand that the cannabis industry is helping us, it's not hurting. And I wish and compel you guys to come to a negotiation with the federal government to legalize it, to help those that are in need. We are asking for your guidance, we are asking for your help, and we are looking towards your guidance and your help. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. William, then we're going to go to the Valley.
I'm William Russ-Boston, and I'm an AIDS patient, and I've been, I've had AIDS since '01. And before that, I had symptoms, and the doctors suggested that I take medicine for that. And what happened is, I had to get a transfusion, a blood transfusion. I became anemic from the medicine. And then they diagnosed me with AIDS, and that's what I have today, and it's not a big deal to me. You know, I live with it, and it's my friend. I know what's going to happen. It could be anything. I mean, I know that can happen. And the doctors say, all bets are off, you know, on my condition, you know. So that's why I bring this little chair with me, in case my legs give out. You know, I don't expect any of you to come back and help me up, you know. You didn't help Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams was invited here to talk, and he came up here and he had five minutes or something like that, and then somebody wanted to ask him some more questions, and they said, oh, well, we can't do it, it's against the rules, you have to ask him on the side. But it was for the education of the public, for us, from what I heard. And then they said, okay, come on up. And here, just come up here and told his dilemma, how sick he was, how his feet were killing him, sort of like minefield today. And, you know, nobody understood compassion. I was on, I was watching on television, and I had some tears in my eyes. That guy was suffering, and there was no compassion for him, you know. And, you know, there's people who are sick that look fine, you know. People say to me, oh, you ride a bike, you're doing good. But my spine is deteriorating, my liver has cirrhosis, I have osteoarthritis, I'm a mess. But you know what? I'm not a whiner, I'm just wanting to let you know, to educate you. You know, I admire the educators and educate you that, you know, you can't tell by looking at them that they needed some help. And, you know what, there's a lot of people that need help that aren't here today, and please, think about them. Thanks.
Let's head on back to the Van Nuys. We have Marion Fogler and Donna Garcetti. Van Nuys?
I need to get people interested here, to come here. Important issues, we can make the cameras cheap here and bring it, make sure we can have people coming here. You know-- You know, there is no distinguishment here of distinction of who is here. There's women here, and there's people who are coming at odd times, and unfortunately, there's a lack of interest, because they've lost faith, because you closed the door. There's no streamlining here, it's no easy way. You expect the, to be competitive in the ports? Well, look what you're doing, you're shutting down Van Nuys, the video conferencing in San Pedro. That's going to be your outreach, and you're shutting it off. And Rosendahl, you talk about human rights and gay rights and for the rights of marijuana. What about the rights for us to have public comment down here in Van Nuys and San Pedro? Why don't you vote yes anyway? Why doesn't Jen Perry vote yes? Why don't you vote yes, Mr. Zine? You're running for city controller. Why don't you vote yes, Mr. Krikorian, yes, in spite of it? Because it's not much change to make a difference. It's not going to make a dent in your, in your budget. So you are just shutting off yourselves, because I'm going to make it a campaign issue. I'm going to try to run for the 6th District myself, to make it a political issue, because you're shutting off the video conferencing that was the leader, that was the tag of the succession movement here. And I want it to come back, I want us to come back, and I want the people to rise up and say something, stop the video conferencing being shut off. We need to have it here loud and clear, and I want you to bring it to a vote now.
Thank you, ma'am. Before our next speaker, we have a quick introduction from Councilman Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. It's Grisby, great pleasure to introduce and welcome to the John Ferraro Council Chambers. We have our, from the Port of Los Angeles student interns, I'm going to have them quickly introduce themselves and what college they go to.
Sheron Berry, Marist College.
Fantastic.
Daisy Franco, Georgetown.
Fantastic.
I'm Reginald Glossen from Dickinson College.
So our fine interns from the Port of Los Angeles, give them a round of applause. Thank you, we love you.
Okay. Our intern program at work. Okay, our next speaker, please come to the microphone over in Van Nuys. We also have Sharon Brewer, I believe, in Van Nuys. Come on up.
Okay, yeah, they just said her name. Okay, yeah, let's see, let's get to the point. Okay, you want to know why people don't come down to Van Nuys? We can see specifically why these chairs are not filled, because we've already spent an hour on doing those two items. People, yeah, the proceedings are unpredictable. We never know exactly when public comment was supposed to come. We see it in the beginning, it's supposed, public comment is supposed to be in the beginning, but we could be standing hours waiting to speak for two, one minute, one or two minutes. So, you know, and we have to go on listening to hours for you people speaking down there in downtown, and you wonder why people don't want to come down here in the Valley, and why people don't want to even go down downtown. But that's wrong, what you're doing is shutting down our voice in the Valley. I'm hoping that people will remember all the ones that voted no on taking away our video conferences, take away the voice of the Valley.
Issue, I'm going to keep it open.
We're going to, take it away, the voice of the Valley, you're going to have to bring it back, because people will remember, people will remember that you're taking away the voice of the Valley. I mean, and it's really your fault why these chairs are not being had, the way you go on a lengthy amount of time on presentations, bringing on every single solitary meeting, we never, no chance of knowing that it's going to be there.
We don't have any time.
So we could be, and I don't want to go downtown, all the way down there, and waiting for hours to speak for two minutes, take three hours to go down there to speak for two minutes. That's wrong, wrong, wrong. Rosendahl, please help us.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer, we have Sharon Brewer over at Van Nuys.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Public comment, June 26, 2012, at approximately 12:07 PM. I'm back regarding my June 4, 2012 email to CD3 about AB 1290 funds and the six specific questions to Mr. Garcia. I still have not received a reply from Mr. Garcia about, one, how much AB 1290 funds did CD3 originally receive? Two, how much funds are still available? Three, what and where have CD3 AB 1290 funds been used for? I have a question for the city attorney. If an agenda item has been continued or already voted on prior to general public comment, is the public still forbidden to speak on the agenda item during public comment? The item is no longer pending city council action. I'm concerned that the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, BONC, is looking at reducing the physical posting sites required for neighborhood councils from five to seven physical postings to maybe one starting, stating that no one looks at the postings. If you consider the boundaries of a neighborhood council, five to seven posting sites are probably not enough. There's also talk about a sunshine ordinance for the Brown Act and neighborhood councils, because it gets in the neighborhood council's way to conduct business outside public meetings. Recent council district redistricting issues regarding transparency when decisions are made shows that the Brown Act should be, not be modified, but enforced. I, as a stakeholder, do not want neighborhood council decisions done without public hearing the discussion. And also, with the conferencing, the remote conferencing from here, yes, people don't show up, because here we are at 10 after 12 to do public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to hold off on the rest of the public comment. We have one item, item eight, and I, look, another boo. When you're at the mic, that's your time. When you're sitting in a, look, Sergeants, we may want to have a chat with him, make sure he's going to be cooperative the rest of the day. Okay, we're on item eight, and I want to call up Mr. Spindler. And then we will go immediately back into general public comment.
All right. Item eight. We have some money due. City's broke, but today, we have a couple of early Christmas presents. The department, the L.A. Housing Department's going to take $297,000 and an extra $368,000 and remove it, totaling 73 invoices off the books. Back when my uncle used to do a collection agency, he used to call that File 13. He used to go and put in the bad debts that can't be collected into File 13, so now the community impact statement, none submitted. However, a fiscal impact says that, unfortunately, today's actions will decrease the city's receivable base by $297,000 and $368,000. Unfortunately, they didn't take out a calculator and add up the two totals to give us the total. So let's assume that it might be about, what, about $700,000, $750,000? So this is a good idea, though, I fully support this. Let's do this. Everybody over the age of 60 that lives in the city of Los Angeles no longer pays property taxes. Let's take all of their outstanding deficits, if they're behind in their property taxes, and wipe those off the books. Because if you can wipe this off the books, you can wipe off anything else off the books. Because that's the way the city of L.A. is run now, it's run by fiat. There is no budget. There are no accountability, there are no rules. Just whoever decides to do something does it, the chairs automatically vote yes, whether the members sit on them or not. So where did this money go? Nobody knows, but 750,000 bucks is gone.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. And Madam Clerk, at the request of Councilmember Zine, we will continue this item until tomorrow, and that date would be the 27th.
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll return to general public comment. Daniel Sosa, Sidney, God, and I should know this, this is the third time I've read this name, Sidney Gravik, and Heidi, and I can't make out your last name. Go right ahead, Mr. Sosa, good to see you again.
Greetings, council. As you've probably gathered over the last couple of weeks, we are very passionate about safe access to medical cannabis. We feel that it's our duty, our responsibility, to ensure that safe, legal, affordable access to medical cannabis remains available in Los Angeles. Even if that means enduring harassment and the threat of incarceration, we feel this is our duty, because that's how passionate we are about it. And that's why you're going to keep seeing us here until these bans go away completely. If you pass a ban, if you pass a limited immunity ban, collectives will stay open. Collectives will sue the city, and the same cycle from 2007 with the ICO, from 2010 with the first ordinance, will happen all over again. Neighborhood councils and the medical cannabis community are sick and tired of this cycle. Let's save us both the time and trouble of having to come down here every meeting. Take these bans off the July 24 agenda. Take these bans off the agenda for good. Thank you.
Okay, Sidney, followed by Heidi.
Good morning, council. You guys have seen us here, day after day, or meeting after meeting, I should say. You guys all know what we stand for, our industry and our community is very prominent. As speakers before have said, we are very passionate about what we're doing. We're not going to stop, we're going to be here every meeting. But to keep things short and simple, I just want to say thank you for listening to us, and thank you for moving it off of the agenda for last Friday, I believe. If we could just table the ban further, or just completely take it off, it would be for everyone's benefit, including the community, which is on a public safety. So please, save our community, let us have safe access, let these sick people get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, Adrian Gross, and Jess Thompson.
My name is Heidi Ure, and I just want to say that medical marijuana relieves my migraines like prescription drugs never have. And also, has anyone thought, asked Canadian officials how legal marijuana has been working out for them for years now? And if not, why? And the taxes from cannabis, if it was legal, would be phenomenal, I think, and we could get programs back for the seniors, children, and disabled. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, Adrian, followed by Jess Thompson, followed by Kobe Lopez.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to speak before you. Okay, so, the sun revolves around the earth. The weather is controlled by the vengeful nature of wrathful gods, and women who disobey their husbands are witches who should be burned at the stake. All of these beliefs are espoused by the greatest minds of their time. And for speaking the heresy that we now accept as truth, its opponents were literally burned at the stake. So on the subject of safe, affordable access to medical marijuana, when history remembers you, you should ask yourselves on what side of that divide you would like to find yourself. And furthermore, let's see, sorry, I lost my track of thought.
No, just regroup.
And I'd also like to say that Los Angeles is a beacon of justice and freedom for the world. It's regarded as such by members of just about every country on earth, and I urge you to consider the gravity of your role. Your decision will be echoed around the earth, and it will set precedents for decades to come. So please do not treat that responsibility lightly. And lastly, I would like to thank Councilman Krikorian, who always gives each speaker his undivided attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess Thompson, followed by Kobe Lopez, followed by Michael Carione.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for having me before you today. My name is Jess Thompson, I'm a TCM physician and resident of Los Angeles County. I'm here today to speak to you to strongly oppose any and all ban that would limit and/or eliminate any medical cannabis collectives in this great city of Los Angeles. By denying any patient's access to medicine is just the wrong thing to do, we should never do that. This medicine is here to help people, it's not going anywhere, it's been in history, it's here to stay. Please do the right thing, and please allow patients not to have to turn to the street and allow them safe access for this medicine. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Kobe Lopez, followed by Michael, followed by Arnold Sacks. Go ahead, sir, good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you. Thank you, everybody here. I was here Wednesday, I was here Friday. I want to thank you guys for taking off the agenda on Friday. Like I said, I'm just here not to, you know, disrespect anybody, yell, you know, council ban this, that. I just want you guys to open your eyes and realize, like I said before, who and what medical marijuana patients are. You know, like I said, I'm a veteran in the United States Army, I'm sick now, I would love to stand here and go into all my illnesses and medications that I've been given, but I don't, I'm not afforded that time, plus I can't pronounce half of them anyways. I have one thought, it just, it keeps reoccurring in the back of my head. Like I said, I did time in the military, and by doing time in the military, I feel like I provided safe access, even though some of you are older than me, for everyone here to have the opportunity and the jobs that you have to sit and represent the people of Los Angeles. Now, if I gave my life, and, you know, a lot of soldiers lost theirs, given, you know, the same opportunity, protection for you guys here as a country, the United States, give us safe access as disabled patients, disabled veterans, disabled all kinds of people. I gave it to you, think about it, give it to us. And a lot of you think, oh, it's marijuana, who cares, it's a drug, this, that. You know, a lot of sick people, it helps a lot of them. And I wish this upon no one, I tried to get into my speech last week, I was cut off, but God forbid, a lot of you have kids, a lot of your kids have kids, your kids' kids are going to have kids one day. God forbid, they're going to grow up, they're going to be sick, they're going to be disabled, they're going to have illnesses, some we can treat, some we can't. Marijuana's going to treat a lot of them, they're not going to be able to get safe access, and you're going to say, damn, I shouldn't have voted that way.
Thank you, Kobe. Michael Carione, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Yes, I'm here to speak on the solo retaining law. I had a few questions, but again, Mr. Buscagno happened to just disappear. This has come to his committee four times, and he's never been there for it. He's not doing his responsibility by having these committees. And now that it is coming back to committee, he's going to show up, it's not on the agenda. So I have to ask myself a question. Is this property owned by a member of Mr. Buscagno? Or is it one of the mayor's girlfriends? I don't know, but this is ridiculous, when somebody's property can go up and up. We can't build a wall in eight years, but you can build a Staples Center, you can get a football field, you can talk about trains and boats. And I'd like to say one more thing. Next time the city attorney interrupts me, I'm going to have to go on record for the vulgar language that he used in this council. Okay? If he's going to interrupt me, interrupt me when I'm not on subject, not because he's got a hair somewhere. I'm flabbergasted on the fact that Mr. Buscagno can't show up for a meeting, yet he states here that he meets monthly with people in San Pedro. He is the chair of the Public Works Committee. I guess we've got no public works going on around here, because everything just gets chuckled down in the trash can, it gets signed off, pushed aside, and nobody does nothing. According to Mr. Weiser's office, this is in Mr. Buscagno's hands now, and it's just being shuffled around, and nothing's being done about it. Well, when somebody dies, I hope Mr. Buscagno comes and sits here and listens to what's going on, and maybe he'll show up at one of his committee meetings where he can hear what's going on. Somebody will get heard.
Thank you, Mr. Carione.
Mr. President, if I may, we are going to hear this item in the next Public Works Committee.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sacks, followed by Wayne Spindler, followed by Dow House Dude. Go ahead, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Pretty fascinating meeting somewhat. I asked Councilman Reyes if he ever led the Pledge of Allegiance at the original...
I asked Councilman Reyes if he ever led the Pledge of Allegiance at the original LA-to-Pacadena Blue Line Construction, I mean, the Gold Line Construction Authority before it was legalized in 2012, excuse me, 2011. If he ever sat up and made the Pledge of Allegiance there. First proclamation, Councilman Rosendahl, you were very right on, you mentioned about going to the upward-bound building in your district. And therein in itself says a precedent for what's wrong with some of the city's homeless population and the programs that you have involved, because you only mentioned one, and there's no other upward bound, or maybe there's another upward bound in another council district? I'm not sure. But there's 15 council districts. Should there be one in each council district? Is that necessary? And somebody mentioned, somebody, the gentleman here motivating you from the LAUSD, and how education and the funding that's to be used to, should be used for education. And yet, the council in and of itself circumvented the rules for that new commissioner of Los Angeles Housing Department by giving him $180,000 more than his ceiling salary by getting outside funds to pay him a higher salary that wasn't necessary, so motivating to spend money to use for housing. Well, we'll spend it on this guy's salary because A and B, A, he's not making enough money, he doesn't have enough benefits, plus, we can find other avenues for salaries. So I'm wondering, how does that address your motivation for other problems? These people here are talking about medical marijuana.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Spindler, Wayne Spindler, followed by Dow House Dude.
Got to work this morning. I parked on the street on Olive near 7th. I've parked there about 15 years, and there's a tollway zone. Somebody changed the signs just the other day, and now it's 7:00 to 9:00 AM, and they give you two-hour parking. So I parked this morning at 7:30, like I've done many times, and my car's gone. Where's my car? It's over at 500 North Center Street because the City of Los Angeles ticketed and towed it away this morning, and it's being held hostage right now, and they want $286, plus the ticket. No due process, no note left. It's only because I know that the car was towed because it either was stolen or it's towed. So I went down to Temple Street, the hotels. They don't have the car. It's in another garage. And I have to go over there, and I got to give these people money for my car, my car that I paid for gas, I paid the loan off that car. And you want to know why people don't want to come to this city to live, and why people don't want to set up jobs, and why the Port of Los Angeles gets bypassed? Because the city is crooked. It sucks. And I'm in an escrow right now. I decided, okay, I'll move closer to work. So I'm going to call my agent up today, and I'm going to cancel a goddamn escrow.
Come on, Spindler, watch your language.
Yeah, you want to watch your language?
Look, come on now.
Come on, no.
I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to ask you to be respectful, because I personally try my best to be respectful for you, to you. I'm going to give you back your time, but you should be sensitive to others. We've got people that are here that have various medical conditions. They're in a big beef with the city. Their lives are dependent upon this issue. But yet and still, each and every one of them treat this council with some respect or professionalism. I'm just requesting that you do the same. Now, give him his 28 seconds back, and you can complete it.
Clock's still at 14.
I'll give you 14 extra seconds. Go right ahead.
It's got to stop. I'm tired of people being vectorized. And what has to be done is somebody's got to lead a process to get everybody to leave the city. That's what has to be done.
Continue, you have more time.
Oh, very good. I want my car back. I don't know which council district it was towed away from. I want my car back, because I'm going to have to go over there and get my car. I was not given due process, those signs were changed overnight. I've been parking there for years, over 10, 11 years, and there was never had a tollway 7:00 to 9:00, and they just replaced those signs. I'm being ripped off. This is an act of economic terrorism, and I want my car freed. I want somebody to call over there and let me pick my car up.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Dude.
Mr. Rosendahl, I watched your face when you talked about all these homeless projects. You had a beautiful, compassionate face. Dude, we need to end homelessness in a permanent basis. And I do offer a formula, I do not offer a complaint. Read my stuff. And if you don't read it, everybody else is going to read it anyway, but, you know, this guy's right. When I lost my car, I had a nice van, there were two police officers beating on the best cars in that lot. I swear to you that it was, it is true. The city has a license to rob the people. We do not need parking meters. Nobody's ever voted for it. You only use it to recruit illegal witches from people. You know, but all those issues are for somebody else. My issue is housing for everyone. There is a formula to end all this homeless BS. It's a huge industry now, the homeless helping industry. No, we need to exercise the formula and provide housing for everyone and change the stupid real estate laws that we've been living under for many, many generations. We need to change the way we do business. You do a lot of crooked business, and you need to stop before somebody comes to you in a violent way. You don't need a violent revolution.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, general public comment is now closed. We'll move to item 23. Madam Clerk, I have two cards on item 23. Sharon Brewer and Donna Peirman in the valley. Goodbye, guys.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 23.
Oh, wait a minute, Ms. Peirman. You're on shaky ground, Mr. Dude. So listen, we'll see you when you come back. Ms. Brewer, start all over again.
All right. Item number 23, it's a motion relative to funding to assist the Glassell Park Neighborhood Council to trim 107 trees along Verdugo Road within Council District 13. One of the problems is that, as far as I know, neighborhood councils cannot receive donations or money. And in this, it says about transferring the money to the Glassell Park Neighborhood Council to assist them with the trimming of the trees. I don't know why you wouldn't just go and use your street furniture fund and do it yourself, but again, as far as I know, neighborhood councils have not been able to go and take donations. It was in council, and it got stalled. So I'm not sure whether or not they really can take and accept these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
I also put in the card.
Okay, I'll look forward, Ms. Fogler, just relax. Donna?
I have a feeling that they goofed up. Can she speak on my behalf instead?
Yes.
Because I have a feeling they won't.
Okay, come on, Ms. Fogler.
Yeah, well, you know, the neighborhood councils obviously want to help, but they shouldn't be getting these donations. According to Sharon, she said that it's not supposed to be that way. I don't know why you can't just put the funds into, like, use the furniture funds to do these trees. You know, this is so important, because this is our city, and we need these trees done, and we don't need to have this money taken out illegitimately and then, you know, donated, because it's giving the wrong message. If you're saying it hasn't even been, what is it? What is it, Sharon? It hasn't been heard, right? Well, anyway, she said that they're not supposed to get donations, so that's all I can tell you.
Thank you. On this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that moves us to item 22 at this time. Jose Zangala, Arnold Sachs, Wayne Spindler, please come forward.
Council members, my name is Jose Zangala, and I'm here today on behalf of the After-School Action Coalition. It's a coalition that we put together a few weeks ago to fill the vacuum at LA Unified regarding the fight for after-school programming. It's a coalition that's comprised of parents, students, business, education, neighborhood council leaders across the city. In a very short time, we've been able to energize the community to come forward and press the LA Unified School District to restore the Beyond the Bell after-school programs. And those programs are very important for thousands and thousands of children throughout the city of Los Angeles, as well as their families, who depend on a safe place for them to play and learn between the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 PM, where many law enforcement agencies have described as a very critical hour, hours for after-school for many students, where they will get in, likely to get into trouble. And we're here today, or I'm here today, with a number of advocates who are asking for your support on this item. We know very well how important after-school programs are to keep kids out of trouble. Your support will send a louder message. Many of us took advantage of after-school programs where we were growing up, and today many students do the same. Your support of this resolution will help continue our fight with LA Unified to preserve this important programming. And I wanted to thank Council President Wesson and all the council members who signed on to this resolution for taking a stand with us. Today, we will continue to organize and look towards Thursday, when the LA Unified School District will vote on its final budget. So we encourage all those watching today to contact your local school board member to ask them to continue to support after-school programming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Spindler, Alyssa Ingstrom, Alyssa Ingstrom, followed by Lydia Grant. Go on, Mr. Spindler.
LAUSD, whatever you do, if you've got children, don't put them in the LAUSD. So, cut, reduce, eliminate, let it die. Case in point, today, they didn't want to talk about something, about a school, a school called the Buckley School. And the city council, it wants to make sure they get $40 million of tax-exempt money. Yet, they're over here on this item going, don't cut the LAUSD, because the reality is, is they know the LAUSD stands for failure. Kind of like a Mickey Mouse song. How do you go and fail? How do you become a failure? M-I-C-K-E-Y. LAUSD stands for failure. So it needs to go away, not to mention the property taxes you pay for it.
Thank you. Ms. Ingstrom, followed by Lydia Grant. Where's Lydia? Okay, go right ahead.
Morning, thank you for your time. My name is Alyssa Ingstrom. I am here representing Tomasa Grady. We are with the environmental nonprofit called Enrich LA, and what we do is we plant edible school gardens in LAUSD schools. For a number of months, we've been partnering with these schools to provide school enrichment activities during and after hours for these students. We will be unable to bring these programs to the schools after hours if these schools aren't open after hours. I urge you not only to pass this resolution in support of restoring Beyond the Bell, but to move ahead quickly with a resolution that has actual funds attached. Council members, this is an opportunity for you to do the right thing and use your discretionary funds to help these programs. I note that Mr. Garcetti has asked for Beyond the Bell for an amount that will restore the program in public schools in District 13. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We truly hope that restoration comes of this. Please pass this, and please add a funding resolution as soon as possible. Thank you, and have a good day.
Yes, Ms. Grant.
Hi, I'm Lydia Grant. For identification purposes, I'm the parent representative on the Sunland-Tahunga Neighborhood Council, and I am also a board member of the Parent Revolution. I'm asking you today to please support this message to send LAUSD a message that our children must be a priority. Stop the continuous erosion of our education system. I gave each of you, or sent for each of you, one of these papers that explains how much money it costs per school to do their after-school program. It used to be, up until 1999, that $3.5 million was given to the after-school programs by the city. Because of the closing of our after-school programs, there will unfortunately see a loss of jobs, there are parents who can't find childcare and may have to leave their jobs, the after-school workers that run the programs, and this will create a larger financial crisis for the city. We will also see an increase in crime, gangs, drug use, due to lack of supervision and engagement of our children. Our local parks are full of homeless and do not create a safe alternative for our kids. We ask for your help, and you can stand up for your constituents and work together to help us find solutions. One of the things that can also be done is to consider changes to the city charter so that the council will be warned before these decisions that will affect the entire city are made. I thank you so much, and we ask that you support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On this item, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, what's before us now?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, members? Okay, let's all rise for adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Barbara Lee Neal, sister Susan, daughter Laura, sons Brad and Todd, grandchildren's Neil, Rebecca, Brayden, Emily, Samantha, Sam, and Kalb. It is with great sadness that I announce the passing of Barbara Lee Neal. Barbara passed away on Sunday, June 17, 2012, at the hospice of northwest Ohio, surrounded by her loving family. Barb, as she was affectionately known, was born October 30, 1932, the seventh and youngest child of her parents, Mike and Amelia. A native of Toledo and a graduate of DeVillebliss High School, Barbara loved and lived a life to its fullest. She was passionate about her family and friends, and was a strong supporter of animal issues. She's survived by her sister, and I mentioned the rest of them, but I just wanted to mention again Brad Neal, her son. Brad is an incredible leader in Venice, who's working really hard on homeless issues. In fact, we're working on a transitional housing project that he has taken leadership. I spoke with Brad the other day while he was at his mother's bedside in her last moments, and I told him what a great son she brought into the world. He put me on the squawk box, and his mother heard it. Her mother smiled. She realized that her son was the result of her incredible love. And you know, it's awful, we all have to pass through the window of death, but the smile meant enough to me and obviously to her son, that she had contributed significantly to making the world a better place. In honor of Barbara, memory mourners are asked to donate to their favorite animal advocacy program or hospice facility. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Members, other adjourning motions? Seeing none, this council meeting is adjourned.